Good evening. I'm joined by the chairman of the Challenge of Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners on Monday, April 22, 2019. Today is a celebration of birthday, and let's begin with a moment of silence in being grateful for the beautiful earth we have here, especially this one. Thank you. Jay Farrell, would you lead us in the pledge?
Sir, would you want to round the pledge? The pledge, ladies and gentlemen.
Goodbye, every United States of America, and the people of which we stand as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have the agenda before you, add to the regular agenda. Is there a proposal to modify it, or is there a motion to accept it as is?
I have the proposal to modify it.
Sure, add to the consent agenda or to the regular agenda?
Oh, we're starting to touch it.
As to the regular agenda, it's moved by Michael Theofo.
Second.
Second is by Pamela Walden. Those who favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. The agenda is passed.
Yes, I'd like to ask that we pull item three from the consent agenda for discussion later in the meeting, rostering commissioner of concern. And item five, I'd like to put on, I suppose that would be old business, corrections.
You heard the proposal by John Bonnet. You have a second?
Item number three, let's make that new business, rostering commissioner of concern.
All right. Just a second to the motion. Those who favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Now, as to balance of the consent agenda, without three and five, is there a motion to accept those items under consent agenda?
So moved.
Let's see, second half with the additional motion to accept the corrections statement.
Right. Thank you. Motion by John Bonnet, seconded by Michael Theofo, with the addition of corrections at your desk. Those who favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Now, ceremonial items tonight, we have three resolutions. One, to start, is a resolution in support of clean energy, which came to us from Commander Robertson, and a recommendation that we acknowledge the fact that other jurisdictions in the state of North Carolina have put in resolutions in support of clean energy. Is there discussion on the resolution? Is there a motion? It's moved by Beth Wilson Foley, seconded by John Bonnet. Those who favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries unanimously. The second motion, I am a member of the League of Women Voters, and still strongly that the Equal Rights Amendment, we, it still has not been passed, but it is requiring 38 state legislators, and 37 of them have so far passed the Equal Rights Amendment. It obviously is something that we need to go forward, state legislature endorsing the fact that we have a very forward-thinking and progressive thought about the role of women in our community. Is there discussion on the resolution in support of the Equal Rights Amendment?
I would only say that I remember as a child the efforts made to pass the Equal Rights Amendment in North Carolina, and that was more than 40 years ago, and I think it's long enough time, so I strongly support it.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Moved by John Bonnet, seconded by Pamela Walden. Those who favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. And finally, a ceremonial resolution to acknowledge that today is birthday, and since 1970, we've been doing it in various different ways. They have now picked up trash in the town of Pittsburgh, and it does indeed help to focus our attention on global awareness of our environment and our community. And the resolution is for you, supporting the idea that we should all join in continuing to fight and restore the ecological sound, and then seek to prevail in the preservation of our earth for generations to come. Is there a motion? It's moved. Second. Moved by Pamela Walden, seconded by Beth Wilson Foley. Those who favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. And the next item is our evidentiary hearing. We have one evidentiary hearing, and those people who are going to be speaking on that hearing need to be sworn, and therefore I will ask them at this time if those persons planning to be on that, speak on that evidentiary hearing. We do have five people signed up, and if there are additional people who would like to speak on it, if you would stand and take the oath, please. You may swear, or you may affirm, so if you simply say aye, and then your name.
Aye.
Swear or affirm that the evidence that I shall give shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Nothing but the truth.
So, having introduction, the item from Pittsburgh, Taylor.
Thank you, ma'am. This is special use permit 2019-01. Tillman Infrastructures is proposing the construction of a communication tower at the intersection of Mitchell's Chapel Road and also important Service Road on parcel The site is zoned RE2 residential agriculture to a minimum, where communication towers over 50 feet in height are required to obtain a special use permit. The proposed tower is to be 300 feet in height and located close to the center of the 23-acre parcel. The tower is located at least 100 feet from any residence, and new vegetation will be planted to meet the screening requirements of the ordinance. Recommendation from staff is to hold evidentiary hearing.
Sometimes we hear first from the proponent of the item. We want to do that tonight, although the first person signed up was Catherine Greenlee. Would you like to speak first, as the proponent?
Okay.
All right, sir. And if you'll come to the podium, give us your name, if you're not already signed up.
My name is Larry Perry. I set up along with Karen Kimmerite, who will be representing the power proponent, Tillman Infrastructure. And as introductions, let me kind of explain what the need of it is for you. I think I'll have a little go on delay. I'm not sure what procedure you want to follow here, but I suppose you want to read it. Any questions we have, if Karen and I'll be able to answer, we'll make that do that way.
Thanks.
I've been in this business since 1970. We have right to commission rules, FCC rules, on cellular communications. I've been in the business for over 50 years. As a matter of fact, I've been in Washington last week on cellular technology. Reason being, and reasonable tower here, or our support structure, we're looking downstream a little bit at the new 5G technology. You've heard a lot about that. If you think about it this way, with 1G, which is the first cellular communication we ever had, it was analog. Remember the old bag phone you used carrying around? That was one, is only telephone. Second G, 2G, is when we had telephone plus text. 3G was when we added digital to it and made telephone, text, and your apps. 4G, we allowed a lot of stuff to come in. And 5G, the light gets bigger, which means we have to do a lot of stuff fast. And the G, the generation, first generation, third generation, second generation, had to do with the speed primarily, and the number of things you could input into it. For example, each antenna on the tower right now, and we have got four towers within four miles of you here, each antenna will handle about 100 telephone calls at any one time. That doesn't include data, let's just talk telephone. Well, as time's going on, we're having problems. We've got dropped calls in the area. All the carriers do it. AT&amp;T, we have nobody work with on this particular project, Sprint, and others do also. And so what we're trying to do now, because from the time we have approval of a local authority to construct the tower, it takes us a little less than a year to get all the federal approval. For example, once we approve, once we get approval here, we have to get permission from 18 Indian tribes around the country to certify that there's no burial ground here, including the hopey Indians out in Arizona who've never been east of New Mexico. That's a federal requirement. So what we're trying to do now is get ahead of the curve. 5G networks are supposed to be in, will be in, in late 2020. They're starting now, but not in small markets like this. They're starting in Los Angeles, New York, but they have a lot of problems. Here, we don't anticipate a lot of problems, but we're trying to get our ducks ahead of the game. That's the reason why we're looking at this tower at present now. And the height of the tower is important to us, and here's why. As of Friday of last week, in our commission meeting, FCC meeting, Washington, the FCC has not adopted a set of frequencies to be used with 5G yet. 3G, 2G, 4G, they've all got the frequencies already aligned, but not so with 5G, because there's so much bandwidth that's required. It's like taking a small pipe that you use at your house to water your yard compared to a huge pipe that you're going to use to throw a whole seater of water. That's the difference that we're looking at, and the difference between 2G and 5G, for example. So what we're trying to do is get in the ballgame, and the height of the towers, because the higher the frequencies go, the shorter the range, the shorter the wavelength. And just one example, last week in Washington, we were talking about 48 gigahertz. 48 gigahertz now, that is very, very, very small. Matter of fact, 20 gigahertz, now I'm talking a bit technical here, I apologize. 20 gigahertz is about the size of a small raindrop. 20, 48 gigahertz is a third of that. Now, why is that important? Because in a small market like this, we have to have the height in order to be able to get the range. Now, will there be more towers? Probably, after the initial impact on this tower and the other ones we have already set up here in the county, there'll be smaller antennas put on your water tanks, your utility poles, this kind of thing. And that creates a problem, not for us, but for you guys, because in order to have, let's say, you have two antennas on two wooden utility poles, let's say they're 500 yards apart. You can't connect those with copper wires, it's got to be fiber. Guess what? You've got to bury the fiber. And that's going to be a real problem. You take, let's take Raleigh, Durham, for example. You know how many antennas per square mile is going to have to be required in Raleigh, Durham, for a size, cities of that size? 200 per square mile. Now, that don't mean 200 towers, I mean, hit 300-foot towers. Those are 35-foot wooden telephone poles that you put the antenna on top of. Now, we can't do that here, because this is a very small market, you never get any kind of return. But we get, we have four towers within a four-mile radius here. You've got five carriers licensed in this community, and AT&amp;T being one up. We're working with, Tillman's working with AT&amp;T on this project to start off with. And the tower is being designed to handle about six carriers with all the new antennas. Right now, you have a tower just south of 64, as you're all familiar with. It's a 300-foot tower, and there's five carriers on it. AT&amp;T is down about the middle, it's on top. And that creates a problem. In the submissions that we made to the planning board here, we showed the coverage now with 5G and the coverage proposed with the new antenna, new tower. And there's a big, big, big difference. And that's what we're trying to, trying to get across, you'd like, is the importance of this additional coverage. Otherwise, if we don't get this done in pretty, pretty soon, pretty quick order, then it can drop way down the list in Pittsburgh, and I'm not threatening anyone, I'm saying Pittsburgh will be way down the list before they get any kind of 5G coverage from AT&amp;T and from, your number one 5G carrier right now is T-Mobile. And they have very, very limited places around the country that they're able to use 5G, because the band, the pipe is so small. And once the FCC approves the new frequency bands, and again, I'm talking a bit technical here, once they approve the new technical band, the new frequency bands, that'll leave, that'll make the pipe much, much larger, and will operate much, much faster. Now, here's the problem. Right now, there are no receivers, cell phones, smart phones, if you will, that can receive all of your frequencies, but not what they are. So it's going to take a little while for your manufacturers to get in line and build these things. And right now, as of last Friday, the feeling is that it will be probably mid-2020 when the receivers, when the Chinese and the people that designed the receivers are having multiple channel frequencies on the receivers being used. But in the meantime, we've got to build the infrastructure to get there, and that's what we're shooting for here. If anybody has any question, I'm going to answer this. I'll just kind of give you a quick intro to our need for this.
Thank you, Mayor Perry. I appreciate that. I have a question. I would just like to hear more about what areas will be served, will reach, serve all the towns out here, short range, how far in the town?
Now, really, good question. Question is, I repeat again, is how big a range is it going to cover? It won't cover the whole city of Chappahee County, because if we have towers, you've got towers over in Durham, Raleigh, and there are going to be a lot more towers, a lot more antennas, let's call it antennas, really, towers over there. Here, you're covering maybe a little less than a mile radius from a tower. Now, if we wanted to build a thousand-foot tower, it's a whole other ballgame. But that's not even possible, that's not even, not even considered. But yeah, about a mile, a little less than a mile radius, depending on the frequency that they have, they have. And the problem is, you know, but remember when it followed us from MRL, y'all were younger than I am, but remember when it first came out with UHF television? Guess what? There's no more UHF television channel. They've taken them up and are auctioning them off to a cell company. And because, the reason we're using those, because they've got low frequencies, they go a little bit further than the ones that they're talking about being auctioned off right now at the FCC. It's still, I can imagine, companies auctioning $1.3 billion for frequencies up in 48 gigahertz trying to handle this issue. Not my money, gigahertz. Do you guys have any questions?
So how far, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think how far about 5G will be served. Please do second.
So what's the question?
How far will it reach in the overall?
If you'll get it back in Durham, all the downtown area.
Okay, it'll go more than that.
Well, it'll be just slightly, that's where I'm going, the elevation. If we stuck with, say, 200 feet, we never make it to Pittsburgh. Again, let me clarify that, it depends on the frequency range that they use. For example, and I'm going to get technical in a second, on your smartphone now, Verizon uses frequencies in the 800 megahertz range, okay? The new channels are going to be much, much higher. AT&amp;T is using 1800 megahertz right now, 1.8. The new frequency I'm talking about is 28 gigahertz, which weighs the devil up there. And so it's, the higher you go, the higher the frequency, the higher the tower you're going to go to cover that area, unless you have a whole bunch of other towers. We're trying to keep them happy to do that. I explained to your planning commissioner, your planning board, when we had our staff meetings, that yes, that all the carriers are going to be using your water tanks, your utility poles, as time goes on, but not immediately. Because we've got to get you service to start with in order to be competitive with the rest of the world. And if you do a small market like this, it'd be a long time before they come up with something like that. And that's what we're trying to shoot for. Just keep that in the command, Raleigh, Durham, Durham, antennas per square mile. Down here, we get five, probably four mega towers. You already got four towers, a little, but they're full. The SBA tower just south of town here is loaded. And you have five carriers. Now, each carrier, each cellular carrier, you're going to have to add nine more antennas as a million, plus the feed line, or each and five, each and five. Now, you take multiply 20, let's say, nine times five, 45 antennas. The tower won't support that, I guarantee it. I'm a professional engineer, and it still, that's what we do. And it supports what they've got now, barely. They couldn't, you couldn't add anything else to it. And so that's what we're trying to do now, is to get it set up to where we can anticipate this, and be ready for it, for all carriers. And let me make another suggestion to you, and I work all, counties all over the country, in cities and municipalities. When you deal with towers, try to deal with somebody that has, it's a vertical real estate owner, not a individual AT&amp;T or US Cellular or Verizon. Because in the past, what's happened, if you authorize, again, I'm talking, get you out of this, okay? If you authorize an individual carrier a tower, typically, unless you have something in your ordinance that prohibits them from overcharging, they'll overcharge all the other carriers, that they don't want them on the tower. That's why you want somebody like Tillman, or like Spectre Side, or either of those carriers, I mean, either of those tower companies, to own the tower, and they make money from renting space on the tower. That's what you want. You don't want an individual carrier. With, just a quick story, I'll leave, leave it to you. We had a situation where company, carrier C, I won't tell you the name of it, down in Georgia, they got a permit, just like you're having here. And there was nothing in the ordinance that said you had to build it pretty fast. And they settled that plan for three years. Well, guess what? In North Georgia, the residential area spread out of that area, and now they're starting to build a tower. I said, whoa, wait a minute, timeout, timeout. You can't build it. Yeah, we can, we got, it's a permit. And they've met all the requirements, but they waited three years to build it, and that was why. So, you know, and we talked to your staff about this too. And whenever you talk, whenever you issue a permit, make sure that your carrier built it for me here. That may be, that's what you have. Any other questions?
How many carriers do you propose this tower will handle?
This tower is designed to handle, right now, until we know the frequency is going to be hard to do that, we're setting up for five carriers, each one of them with nine antennas on it. You've got five, you've got five carriers already licensed to this area. You've already got towers around that support them there, their antennas, but they won't support additional antennas. So the problem is, everything right now is operating in this 800 or to 1.8 gigahertz range. And we're talking about antennas that go way up to 28 gigahertz. So you add a lot more antennas, a lot bigger feed lines. The higher the frequency, the bigger the feed line.
And what is that going to do to our tower, to some, our tower road? Do you tell communications, does that have anything to do with that?
It has no effect on it. Your new tower you're proposing, you proposed a new 400-foot tower out here from the 9.1 grad, and it had no effect on that. Totally unrelated. And again, that's a good question. The reason you have to go up 400 feet is because they're changing frequencies. They're going to a higher frequency than where they are right now. They have to have that top tower to cover the whole, the whole area that they need for that one law. That's a good question.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
The lot acreage right here says 23 acres.
That's correct.
Are you planning on using 23 acres?
No, 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 no. No, that's the total, that's the total amount of acres that Mr. Mann had to be rented from, which rented 160 foot.
Okay. And that includes guy wires and all stabilization and all that?
Yeah, yeah, and the access road.
Okay.
No, 23 acres, you build houses, and doing, and the rest of it, that's it.
Okay.
24 acres is just the amount of property that's likely that you had, that you ever rented.
Other question. Is that, would they have the adjoining landowners concerned?
We hired a, that question came up, Jeff and the planning commission asked us, the planning staff asked us to be able to show that it's not going to devalue any of the land property. And we, and we submitted a report, a 51-page report, that should be in your land. And if you look at it on page 16, if you got it, it says very clear that, in his opinion, after looking at all the property that's been sold in the area, not just, not, not just in Raleigh or Durham or Charlotte, but in the area around here, he gave examples of it, and it's his opinion that won't devalue the property. Now, let me explain something to you also. I've been in these cases, we've had 25 cases all around the United States where this thing issue came up, well, not in my backyard, because it's going to devalue my property. Ladies and gentlemen, there has never been any major case that's been on appeal, that's been upheld, for people claiming that the property's been devalued. It just doesn't happen. After you build a tower, in my experience, in six months, you ain't noticed the thing's there. Even if you're right next door to it, like some of these people are, it's only sound of a hundred feet apart. We meet all your ordinance requirements. We worked very hard to get there, and your staff have been very, very good to work with us, and it must to meet those things.
I can get more.
And look on page 16, it is, it has to be second here, but.
I know that property quite well.
Very good. Well, you have a good one, please. Ask the question about it.
Further questions in the door? All right. And Karen, did Karen wish to speak? Sorry, I can't speak without being here.
My name is Karen Kimmerite, and I'm an attorney with Fox Rothschild in Raleigh, and I have been helping and assisting with the application. I actually was not expecting to be making a presentation this evening, but I would like to do so, since I'm here. To begin with, I did want to mention, I do, I do think that there's at least, from my understanding of looking at the sign, and she, maybe two or three people who are here to speak, and they, they have some concerns. I don't know what their concerns are. I did speak with someone that we spoke in prior to the hearing, and I came from Raleigh, and she also came from Raleigh, and we spoke very briefly. However, prior to the hearing, it's my understanding that no one had reached out to Tillman or to AT&amp;T to express any concerns. And in fact, prior to coming here this evening, we, we were under the belief that there was no concern, no opposition to the tower, and we thought it was a great location, that there would therefore be no, no concern about the tower whatsoever. So what I'd like to do is just take a minute or two to add to what Larry mentioned, to just talk about some of the technical information, to show how we have met all the requirements of the town's ordinance. First of all, we have submitted a very detailed application that includes the site plan, and the application and the site plan demonstrates we have met all of the requirements of the ordinance. And what was also included with the application is a property report from David Smith, who is a North Carolina certified real estate appraiser, and that's included with the application, and he provides his expert opinion. So I won't go through all of the details of our application, but I would like to highlight the special use standards. The first standard is that the proposed tower will not materially endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. And we provided a narrative response in addition to the site plan, and we provided information about how better access to telecommunications coverage is important to residents who important to residents who come through the town, schoolchildren that can have better access to, to data. And then also for improvement in the network, which is going to be upgraded to, to 5G, which is important for, for rural communities and areas to remain competitive. And we also provided information that the tower will comply with all FCC and FAA requirements. We showed, we listed how we met the specific requirements of the zoning ordinance, and then we also provided information about how the proposed tower will not substantially enter the value of adjoining or abiding property. This is a largely agricultural area, and the parcel itself is a large parcel. It's about 23.34 acres. And as provided on the site plan, which is sheet one of the site plan, and I believe this is up on the screen here, we demonstrated that the tower will be located a great distance away from all of the abiding roads and from the adjacent properties. The tower is going to be, is going to be located about 691 feet from Mitchell's Chapel Road, 508 feet from the property to the north, 422 feet from the properties to the south, and 366 feet from the property to the west. The tower has also been cited on this large parcel so that it will have the least visibility possible, because it's been located generally in the middle of the parcel. We also have provided information about how cell towers are considered to be low-impact uses. They are unmanned facilities that are not open to the public, and they do not require any water or sewer services. And because they are unmanned facilities that are not open to the public, they will generate very little traffic. Will generate only about two vehicle, two to four vehicle trips per month. And those vehicle trips are for maintenance purposes only. Cell towers also, as we've provided that information in our application, they do not generate any type of odor or noise. And then, because they are low-impact uses, they will be consistent with the, with the area in which it's to be located. Mr. Smith's property was, as I mentioned, is a North Carolina certified real estate appraiser. And he provided information, even though the ordinance did not require this standard, he provided information to demonstrate that there will be no adverse impact to the nearby properties in regard to property values. We also provided information about how the tower will improve communities' quality of life due to improved coverage in the area and access to 5G. And then also, the, the tower will provide the benefits of providing telecommunications services during times of emergency, which includes during storms when more traditional landlines, telecommunications may come down. Telecommunications is the best opportunity for emergency calls. We also provided information demonstrating that the cell tower will be in harmony with the area, as I mentioned before, it's a primarily agricultural area. And as I mentioned before, and I won't repeat it again, the, the towers can be located a great distance from the adjacent roads and the adjacent properties. And as I mentioned, it's a large parcel, over 23 acres, and the tower will be located in the middle so that it will have the least visibility possible for the adjacent properties. Again, there will be no odor or noise, and it will fit into all the with the, with the area. We also provided information about how the tower will meet, will be consistent with the town's land use plan. And we provided several instances of consistency with the land use plan. First of all, that the tower will be consistent with the rural residential agricultural zoning classification. And we demonstrated that the tower will be located on agricultural land, and the property may continue to be used for agricultural purposes outside of the leased area that Larry mentioned. Only the leased area will be, will be used for the tower. And then by allowing the telecommunications tower to be located on this site, the property will be able to remain largely as agricultural property. And therefore, the rural area, excuse me, the rural character of the area will be able to be maintained. We also demonstrated that the tower will be consistent with the town's economic development goal. And we provided information that businesses are increasingly relying upon wireless services to conduct their business. The tower is also consistent with the character goal of the town, because the tower will enhance the residents and the, and the visitors to the town by providing convenience, safety, and efficiency benefits of wireless. So that is kind of a verbal description to demonstrate that we have met all of the ordinance requirements. Thank you very much.
Questions for Karen?
Thank you.
I'd like to begin a motion, because we have an entry hearing, so if we might, look, just look that in here and take it. Michael, John is second, he doesn't favor presenting. Thank you. Now, as to the other speakers, Kathleen Greenlee, we have you next. Few times.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Greenlee, and I guess I represent the not in my backyard group. Our property is contiguous to the proposed site for this cell tower. I'm here with my husband, Tim. We've lived in Chatham County since 1993, and we've lived in this home since 2005. I'd like to point out that there is already a cell tower directly across from us, as we sit on our front porch and can see it. And we don't want to now sit on our back porch and see another one. The idea of having another one erected directly beyond our home in view of our back deck, our pool, our yard, we're not happy about it. In fact, we're very disappointed at the prospect of it. No one approached us ahead of time. I found out about it when there was a yellow sign for a public hearing put on the land. And we live on Alston Horton, which is the other corner. I have done some research, particularly because of my concern over my husband's health. He is a congestive heart failure patient, and he does have an implanted defibrillator, ICD, and pacemaker. And his doctors have specifically warned him to avoid high concentration electromagnetic fields, and this would increase his exposure to that. Also, I would like to subvert the idea that it will not affect property values. You can say on paper that it will affect property values, but if I were going to buy that house with that tower right behind it, today I would probably look elsewhere first before settling on that property. Eyesore, yes. I feel like it would become an eyesore. It is not just a rural area. We have lots of neighbors, a little community there. Yes, there are fields, and we love looking at them. But we have neighbors, and this affects people, not just land. Aside from the aesthetic and financial ramifications that could result from this, I would just like you to keep in mind that there has been research on cell towers by one, Dr. Martha Herbert of Harvard University, states about electromagnetic fields associated with cell towers, that they can certainly contribute to degrading the physiological integrity of the body system at the cellular and molecular levels. And this in turn can contribute to the cause of autism, highly common chronic illnesses including cancer, obesity, diabetes, heart disease. Radiofrequency electromagnetic radiation from Wi-Fi and cell towers can exert a disorganizing effect on the ability to learn, remember, and it can also be stabilizing to the immune and metabolic function. We're people. Land is one thing, but we're people. And in light of this, I would ask you that you would consider not only the aesthetics of the area, but the health, the well-being. The quality of life is not going to be improved by 5G. The quality of life is going to be improved by a healthy environment. So I would ask that the possibility of the adverse impact on the property, the resale values, which we could properly investigate a little further, and the potential health risk to the area's residents, I would implore you to deny this proposed cell tower application on behalf of the people that live on Mitchell Chapel Road and Alston Horton Service Road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kathleen Greenlee. Are there any questions in the board?
I just want to support that board, the property is, okay?
Our property is on Alston Horton Service Road, which is at, it's at the corner of Mitchell Chapel and Alston Horton Service Road. And so that field backs right up to the back of our property.
The Greenlee's, is that correct?
Greenlee, yes.
I have a question, but I just like to point out that basically, there are a lot of homes there. It is residential, it's a church there, and it is really heavily residential. It at one time was agriculture more so, but now it is residential more so than agriculture.
The next speaker is Lynn Mann.
That would be the, I'm just a property owner, and I got a bad hip, so if I could sit here, I'd love to do that than just stand up.
That would be fine, you have a good loud voice.
Got a good voice, yeah.
But when they approached me about this cell tower, I asked them, you know, to move it to the center of the property to be away from everybody. And I had the road changed from the Greenlee property, which they wanted to come in off the Alston Service Road, to the other side of the property, so it would give a permanent border to the owners on the north side of the property. I used to farm all of this land, but it's been sold as residential, and there was never any property lines. I just, I reed it all the land, and I just paid the people, who does a rent. So I wanted to have a, a border to where they would have a property line on the north side of the property. And, well, the bottom line is, I was approached, and I guess anybody else that's approached made an offer, you would pursue it. I mean, the financial situation of the agriculture industry is such, you have to try to make a dollar if at all possible. Because I'm one of the last dairy farmers in this, in the county. Not that any got anything to do with the night, but in 1965, there were over 200 dairies in Chatham County. Today, there's four. So I'm just trying to survive.
Thank you, Lynn Mann, I appreciate that. The last speaker is Sydney Taylor. Mr. Taylor, please come to the podium, please.
I'm new to this, so. Anyway, my name is Sydney Taylor, I'm from Raleigh. And my founder owns property adjacent to this property, where tentative plans are being made to build the, build the cell tower. The owner of that property originally is my father, Joseph C. Taylor. And my concern is that will this increase of the increased property value, some comments have been made about that. But I do know that in talking to friends of mine over the years who are about to buy property, if there was a tower on their property, they did not want to be there. And we are hoping that we can sell our property in the near future, and we are hoping that the tower won't take away from that. And of course, at the same time, our concern is that will this tower decrease or increase the property? And at the same time, what is the city planning to do to connect to Mitchell Chapel Road so as to increase property values? And will they connect to the bypass in the near future and connect to city water utilities? All of this would increase property values. But will this add to increasing the value or decreasing it? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The couple days that include, I may as well, can you read it? May I take you, please? Did you take yours? I did. Okay. Is that okay? Thank you. I forgot to put my name on the, on the sheet when I came in, I apologize. So what I wanted to say was that towers can be really disruptive from the environment that we live in, and I can't imagine anybody would disagree with that, I think. You know, to look and see one, and it's ugly, and we've had some residents speak here tonight. And while I'm sort of not in my backyard, because I do live in Pittsboro and in Chatham, and I think the last thing I would like to have are a bunch of towers all over, I'm speaking tonight really for two reasons. One is because indeed, my husband and I have been AT&amp;T cell users. And I'm no longer an AT&amp;T cell user, because we had lousy service at the house, because we live in the other direction of this location, and are still very close to the town of Pittsboro, and service was lousy. He still uses AT&amp;T, lousy service. But I'm, I'm here tonight speaking about this topic, because I know that we do have another tower about a half an hour or half, half a mile away, SBA Tower. And my understanding is that tower does have room on it. And I think that in light of the situation and the residents that live in this area, I would implore the town board and staff to please look there first. My understanding is there's space, and they haven't spoken with AT&amp;T and not to take money out of Tilman Communications pockets. Or the owner of the current property, I think on behalf of the county and the town of Pittsboro and the residents that live in that area, it would behoove commissioners and the town of Pittsboro to really look at how fast we want to grow and develop with a bunch of towers popping up. I know that's just one more tower, but so it begins. So I'm here speaking to really find out first if SBA can serve their needs before we jump in and approve another tower. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, Madam Mayor, my name is Bob Hornic, H-O-R-N-I-K. I'm a attorney from Chapel Hill, and I represent SBA. I've got a little handout. I had spoken to Mr. Joe's last week.
Your Honor, this is Madam Mayor. We're going, we're going to object to this, because under, under, don't throw out the law, he's not allowed to object to this. And if you want, you want the case up, you better give it to your, your attorney.
Mr. Mann, if you'd clarify things for us.
I have no idea where you start.
Under ours rules, we allow any individuals to speak to speak, but of course, Bob Hornic, you did not sign up, but I think that.
I was sworn, I was sworn when I, I didn't know the sign up sheet was here. And I was sworn when you said those who signed up and those who did not sign up, and I was sworn. And it is a, I'm not going to read through my presentation, but I'd ask the board to look at it and pay careful attention to it. Again, I'm here on behalf of SBA Sites LLC, which is the owner and operator of the other tower, about 2,200 feet away to the south from this site. And I'd like to point out a few things about this application, about the material that was in the application, and some additional information that I have received from SBA concerning the application, concerning the availability of space on the SBA Tower for AT&amp;T. As a matter of fact, AT&amp;T, right now, is already on the SBA Tower. And so it came as a little bit of a surprise into SBA's chagrin that AT&amp;T was talking to Tilman, or that Tilman was talking to AT&amp;T about AT&amp;T locating on this proposed new tower. Regarding the application, except for one photograph in David Smith's appraisal report, you'll find there's no mention whatsoever of the existence of the AT&amp;T Tower in this application package. Whether that was by choice or by happenstance or whatever, I don't know. But the application gives no indication whatsoever that AT, that the SBA Tower even exists. It does. It's 2,200 feet away. Exhibit E to my package is a letter from SBA indicating that they have space available on their tower, that they had spoken to various carriers, and seeking interest in that space on the tower, back in January and February, but from captors, certainly not from AT&amp;T. Exhibit A to my letter is an aerial photograph taken from the application itself, which shows the site of the Tilman application. And down on the bottom of the photograph, you can see the site of the existing SBA Tower, it's about 100-foot tower down on Old Cyrus Street Road. So there is in fact another tower available within less than half a mile of the site. Exhibit B to my letter are copies of some maps taken from the application packet, which likewise do not show the existence of the SBA Tower, just to the likewise do not show the existence of the SBA Tower just to the south of this proposed site, shows several other cell tower sites, but not the SBA site. Exhibit C are propagation maps, I don't know if you know what propagation maps are, but radio frequency engineers can do modeling to show what kind of coverage might come from a particular site, a particular frequency, at a particular height. What I have in Exhibit C is kind of matched pair propagation studies, showing what coverage would come from the AT&amp;T proposal at the proposed site. The second page shows what coverage would come from the existing cell tower. And I have this at various different frequencies, 700, 850, 1900. And the point of that is to show that you get almost the same, almost exactly the same coverage from the existing SBA site as you would get from this proposed Tillman site. So I suggest to the board that the Tillman site is not necessary. Exhibit D to my letter is commentary by a radio frequency engineer for SBA that really describes a little bit what he's trying to show in Exhibit C. The last point I want to make with respect to the application is that if Mr. Smith isn't here tonight to talk about his appraisal report, well, it's not really an appraisal report, it's a study of the supposed impact on copy values of the proposed new site. Couple of things I want to point out, and you can see it on the map that's up on the board here, there's a tree line on the west side of the man property. Mitchell's Chapel Road is on the east side. This proposed tower is going to be on the east side of the tree line, it's going to be plainly visible from the road, from the neighbors, like from the Greenlee's house, for example. It's not only going to be a tower, it's going to be a lighted guide tower. So there are going to be guide wires coming down diagonally from halfway or so up the tower to anchors that will be Easter man's fields. It is, we submit, going to be an eyesore on one of the gateways into Pittsboro from the west, right along Highway 64 and Old 64. There's already a tower there that is perfectly well-suited and capable of accommodating this equipment, and accommodating 5G equipment. There's nothing special about 5G equipment. Sure, it's more, it's more, it's more modern technology, and has greater capacity to transmit and receive, but there's nothing physically special about it that would make the existing cell tower incapable of handling 5G equipment. The SBA Tower is capable of handling the 5G equipment, Exhibit E says so. For all those reasons, I would ask the board to deny the application. You know, were this tower in Chatham County's jurisdiction, Chatham County would require the applicant to seek co-location first. Chatham County has a cellular telecommunications ordinance, adopted in 2015, that deals with kind of hierarchy of preferences about, about locating cellular facilities. Back in the past, I worked building Next tells and Sprint's telecommunications towers across New York State. And when I was doing that, there was always, always a preference for co-location. It's gotten stronger and stronger over the years, and we're seeing a lot more of it here in North Carolina. And I would suggest to the board that adding a new tower so close to the existing tower is not in harmony with the area, it's not in harmony with the district, and it can be avoided because there's already an existing facility that can accommodate the equipment. So I'd ask the board to deny this application.
Hey, Bob Hornic.
Good morning. Yes, sir. I heard you say that AT&amp;T is already on the SBA Tower? Yes, sir.
In that response?
It is not our intention to get into a debate here. I think we've heard the presentation of evidence, and I think that now the matter needs to be referred to the planning board, which will meet first Monday.
Thank you. For the record, though, based upon lack of standing, I will present a memorandum to demonstrate that Mr. Hornic and SBA have lacked standing in this matter. Therefore, I make a motion to strike all argument that was made and information that was provided, because if an individual or a property owner, and this is not even a property owner, this is a competitor, and AT&amp;T is already on the tower, if they lack standing, they are not permitted to present any testimony, argument, or information to a town, county board to accord. So I make a motion to strike and have the evidence be excluded.
Madam Mayor, may I make one last point?
We do not go by court evidentiary rulings here, so I'm going to proceed to the next matter, which is a public hearing, we have a very large agenda tonight, and the first public hearing under... So we will need a motion to go out of our evidentiary hearing, that will move that panel of all, that confirms my proposal, those who pay the fees, they have no idea, those who, motion carries. Now, we need a motion to go into the ordinary public hearing, which is a four, we have four votes tonight, and the first one is regarding community development block grant. And still we have, we have two people signed up for that. And Ryan Grusbeck, are you going to give us an outline of the matter here?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor, I'll be brief. You are familiar with DG Gelaro, they're a manufacturer of medical devices that purchased previously vacant building on Hay Street that was commonly referred to as Biolex. They're currently working with Chatham County EDC and town staff to apply for funding for community development block grant administered through the North Carolina Department of Towners. This would be for a building reuse grant, as it's commonly called. This type of an application is required to have two public hearings. The first public hearing is intended to focus on general citizen comments regarding economic needs and desired economic development activities. If you so choose, the second public hearing, which we may decide to schedule for later in the second meeting in May, setting the public hearing the first meeting in May, that public hearing, that is, the second public hearing, would focus more on the actual project, the specifics of the actual project. So again, the public hearing tonight is just to gather any, as required, to gather any comments on general economic needs, economic development activities in Pittsboro. And my comments, just point out, if you don't have any other questions.
Well, in the spirit of the public hearing, I think we should go into the public.
So in and out, here we go. Thank you. So in favor of the motion made by Michael Fio, go second if I have him involved, and please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now...
All right, will I do that again?
I don't have, I can't. I'm totally leaving that, surprised.
We have two speakers tonight on that particular issue, and the first speaker is René Gold.
Can you step out, can you use a picture? Yes, please.
This is our speaker, Elizabeth Burke.
Hey, Elizabeth Burke, 964 East Street in Pittsboro. Thank you. I believe we've, I've spoken to several commissioners about this individually, but you all know this is a proposed investment in the former Biolex building, a 40, an infill of a 40,000 square foot in light industrial property. It's been vacant since about 2013. So we appreciate your support with this effort. The Rural Infrastructure Authority from approved a $300,000 grant for this just last week. So we'll be coordinating, the economic development, we'll be coordinating with the town on this application with your support. This will create a long-term return on investment through increased personal and real property tax for the town. And again, the initial plans are to create 60 jobs in this location, but the business owner believes they can scale up even larger, even more quickly, and that particular building will support close to 100 cars in its existing parking lot. So we think this will be a great reuse of an existing building, generate a lot of activity in the downtown and Main Street proper, and thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth Burke. Do you want to be a great voice, album, and all the way that he's still here to speak?
Between the parts that permit. I'm throwing my hands in.
Yeah.
Like, do I have? Victoria Vella is going to need us in a discussion of the second matter on the public hearing, which is a proposal for a music studio in an RA2 zoning district. I don't think we have to open the floor.
She's looking at buttons. We have zoning text amendment 2019-01. Luke McFann is requesting an amendment to the permitted use table of the Pittsboro zoning ordinance. Currently, the table allows vocational businesses, secretarial schools, and music or dance studios by right in zoning districts C1, C2, C4, M1, M2, MUPD, and by special use permit in districts O and I and RA. The applicant is requesting that this set of uses also be allowed by special use permit in the RA2 zoning district. And the RA2 zoning district on this map is the lime green color. Regulations to hold the public hearing.
And the first person to sign up is Mr. Collins, Luke McFann. Luke, if you can, in the front, please.
Hello, how are you doing? Does that sound better? Okay. Like she had just mentioned, I was interested in having a live recording studio on this piece of property on Flint Hill Farm, and as I was looking through the permitting and what was allowed, it seems like a lot of the, is there any permits were already allowed with the RA2, or everything but the RA2, so just wanted to add there, at the, at the request of my proposal, that I originally spoke with the town, it was suggested that, you know, the, with the board and submit a proposal for a special use permit. So I'm here.
Do you have a definitive plan to proceed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we do. Yes, we, so we currently got a lease on the property, and we have a plan to do some installs and get a bathroom up there and things like that.
So that area is primarily residential, so we have spoken with the, their residents around that area in reference to the disturbance of their peaceful people and possible disturbance?
Not yet.
Because, as I said, very peaceful, very calm in that particular area, so are you planning to allow loud music or what's the situation?
So right now, we're planning on doing recording inside the buildings.
I know it's going to be inside, but even if it's inside, it's a long time.
Yeah, so just for a reminder, propose for the RA2 zoning district for, to make them a special use permit, so Luke or another person in that zoning district has to come back to the law for a public hearing, that's when the neighbors would be invited to the bond. But that, that particular property would be posted, so they would know more about the, the business ownership. So what Luke is trying to do is just to add music studios to RA2, it's already sort of allowed either as a special use permit or a permitted use by right in most of the zoning districts, as Victoria showed you on the screen. There is, I think O and I have special use permit and RA has special use permit. SaaS advised the applicant that if he wanted to make a go at this, that that would probably be the most appropriate, protects the merchant, would be the appropriate way to take, make a go at it. We didn't think free zoning of properties was appropriate at this time, but trying to make an argument to you all, into the public, that a music studio in that zoning district might not be, might be a bit, but that's for you all to decide.
I just have concern, I knew that that would not, because I am very concerned, even if the resident is, is not involved in gun at this particular moment, it does, I'm very concerned.
Yeah, and the only things that we found in the current zoning ordinance, when those particular zoning districts are special use permitted, there's no standards for what that special use permit has to meet, other than not being injurious to other property. The standard basis of that, oftentimes, you'll, you'll find other conditions for special use permit, like distance away, or noise level, or light levels, or extra screenings. We don't have those, and the applicant is not proposing any tonight to use it, because we don't currently have those in the county board. But we would fall back on the general fact for, in music studios, whether it be an O and I, or RA, or as proposed, RA2 zoning district. If this were to be approved, it would be approved in May at the 13th meeting, the applicant could then turn in an application for a special use permit, and then we could start the process of holding that public hearing, most likely in June and then July for official decision on his particular situation. That's probably the quickest to get his particular situation taken care of. But we include the map because it is a large area of, of your city. And right now, music studios are generally in your colored areas, and then in that lighter green band around the town. You start getting out into the darker green, into the lime green areas further out of town, that's where you're getting the RA2 and RA5 zoning districts where, whoever wrote that use in the ordinance some time ago, thought that at that time, that was not something that was, that the town wanted. But there's not a whole lot, lot of difference, other than acreage from the RA zoning, because there's one acreage of the RA2. So from a SaaS perspective, it wasn't totally a deal breaker, it was, let's, let's see how things go, and then make sure that it's a special use permit, it's not permitted use by right, and if that works to pass, then we would have a public hearing, and they'll call up on that.
Well, you answered the question I was going to ask, because I know many, many of our special uses have additional features or characteristics that we need to adhere to. to. But not for a music studio, well, it's a music, vocational school, dance studio, those are all sort of in keeping the same sort of theme there. And we, the ordinance currently does not have any special regulations on those. It's just a public hearing in ONI and RA. Is there a parking requirement?
So we would go to the, to the parking ordinance or parking portion of the zoning ordinance, and we would try to closely find that, I think we have vocational schools and I don't think we have, have a particular music studio, but we would find the closest ones do that.
Because it would be someone, I mean, it would be a non-residential use, not necessarily commercial.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Victoria, could you point out the property on that map for me, please?
Well, RA2 is all those colors right around here, and the applicant wishes to open up the music studio, I think it's right around the area.
There's the greenhouse, where we still find the greenhouse, that building to the front.
Okay. For the floor, we have.
Yeah, we cut a year and a half ago, y'all gave permission for a floor, so it's not there. She made a go at it.
So that's that property around there?
That's right. And that's why we wanted to include this map, so you make sure that she's fully aware.
And this is the tricky part to me, because that location is not really that close to anybody's house, but some of the other light green areas could be right in residential.
I'm hearing questions. Do we as a board want to consider evaluating proposals if they come? If gentleman like, well, Mr. McMahon and gentleman like him, or people like him, want to bring special use permits, are we wanting to even consider special use permits in this zone for the R area in the future?
I'm curious to know, like Commissioner Paul was saying, how much noise can you hear out in the city? I know that I have a music studio right in the heart of Asheville, and they have neighbors all around, and you can hear it. It's all inside.
I always want to have a great sound installation.
I've got some information on that.
We might want to hold that for his case.
I think you might want to, that's definitely going to demonstrate he's not injurious to the other property. So if you decide to go forth with it, Mr. McMahon could present evidence to that business could be. And then on each individual business opportunity and location, you could evaluate for those items that you would want to know about noise levels, light levels, traffic.
Okay, so it would still be when we came from.
Yeah.
But that was my question, whether it's going to be broad or still.
It would take a while.
All right.
And Jeff, I would say that in consideration of this, I think it would well to recommend it as a special use.
All right. If there are features in any of those. He's speaking on the proposed music studio, and you were out of the room at the time.
Yes, I'm sorry, I had to actually pick up my wife. We are trying to live by your resolution, where we've had one car for two years as an experiment, so when she calls, I have to get her to lie. So I missed my opportunity to say something.
And we thought you were negotiating out.
Nope, I went to answer the more important call.
It was a negotiation.
That was not negotiable, Mike. I just wanted to speak to this application. I know Luke McMahon, I've played music with him, I can attest to the fact there are lots of musicians in Pittsburgh and Chatham County, and having access to high-quality studios would be helpful for all ages and all types of musicians. Luke does, he probably didn't brag about himself, but he's very well-known in the area, has worked at DPAC and other places, and is adept in having the quality of work that he would do on this property for a studio would be an asset for the community. That's all I wanted to say, having worked with him personally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any further questions?
I did sign up, but can I speak briefly?
More? Thank you. Liz Collington, 390 Rocky Hills Road. This is my zoning area, not this particular project, but this is my zoning category. And out here in the ETJ, we have issues that you all in town don't have, which are private dirt roads maintained by these tenuous, often rather old road agreements. And some of these areas out there are governed by restrictive covenants as to what you can build and do on the property. Some of those covenants expire when all the lots are sold, some just expire. They're a nightmare to enforce. It's a nightmare to collect the money to maintain the road, this constant interneighbor warfare, and I hear this from other parts of the county with these private dirt roads, regarding who's driving too fast, who's driving more on the road, so on and so forth. And so the first thing I would like to ask you to do, since you're doing a UDA workshop in like three weeks, is to separate these uses that you have bunched together, where a music studio is considered the same as a vocational school or dance studio. One has virtually no traffic, no more than a normal person would get from visitors, and vocational school and dance studio, which get a lot of traffic. I also wanted to say, if something is subject to a special use permit, even if there are no standards, what it allows you to do out in these rural areas where it could affect the neighbors, is to put the applicant in position of having to make peace with the neighbors in order not to have the neighbors come in here and oppose it. For instance, if a daycare center is at the very end of a dirt road, and all this traffic is going to come in and out, but it's, it's, it's not prohibited under a covenant, but everybody pays the same per lot, then one person is going to be getting a bit of a free ride from their business on that road. But if it's subject to a special use permit, then they have to basically cut a deal with the neighbors to pay more for the road maintenance, to get their daycare approved. And I tried to address this during the UDA public hearing, but your consultant had, obviously has never lived out in the country, didn't have clue one what I was talking about, and I noticed that when he did his comments. Thank you. Thank you. All right. So we ready to then go to the next public hearing, which is a, also Victoria Vella is presenting a text amendment in regard to downtown overly district.
Thank you, ma'am. This is zoning text amendment 2019-02. Town Board Commissioners is requesting an amendment to the downtown overly district text in the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance. The request is to amend the setbacks in the district by the addition of the following text. Properties within the district which are used or zoned as non-residential and are adjacent to or across those streets from property zones C4 shall be subject to the same front yard requirements and corner walk side yards requirements. Current six for the property zone C4, as depicted in 5.4 table area yard in high requirement and 5.4.1 notes to the table area yard in high requirement. We provide this map of the overly district, which is the zoning, and the parcels which are hatched, they are the ones that would be affected by this text amendment. And the recommendation is to hold the public hearing.
Was there a particular applicant proponent for this?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiocco?
Yes. Yes. I all heard this language. And it's a mechanism by which I think we can expand the zoning requirements of C4 to areas within the Main Street boundary, that are zoned something other than C4, and give them the benefit of the C4 zoning standards. And this would apply only to the properties' street frontage, so the rear yard and the side yard would not be impacted, just how properties relate to our streets in a very urbanized area, trying to make our street frontage active. That's a good tool to do that.
As I was reviewing this, thinking it through, my wife asked the question, well, does that mean that development on these particular parcels would be allowed to not have sidewalks? And I said, sure, that's not the case, because the rest of our zoning would require sidewalks and other rights away.
So if we, zero to the right of the law, and a lot more to the right of the law.
And is there a, is there a case at hand right now where this might plot ETJ larrows?
Yeah, that is, there's someone who would have to, I think, be.
Although I definitely wouldn't take that into consideration.
Right, okay. This is a good example of what this might do.
That's a particular site and building that I care to.
I'm sorry, Jane Carroll, did I cut you off?
I must have missed that. It was right by me.
That's right. We're all, not allowed to. That was very helpful.
We have only one speaker signed up for this public hearing, and it would be Randy Rolla.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I should have worn a different color hat, because I'm wearing another hat this time. I'm just speaking on behalf of Main Street Pittsburgh as a board member and the Chair of the Economic Vitality Committee. Commissioner Fiocco has brought this before our board, it has been discussed, it was reviewed favorably. The property that he was referencing is the one that is adding the 60 jobs, and we, we thought it was a good idea, and we supported Commissioner Fiocco, so we just want to put that on the record.
Thanks, Randy Rolla. Are there any further questions for Victoria Vella? Without we have completed that public hearing and have one last point to do, which is an annexation request for section five of the Chatham Parkway.
This is annexation 2019-01. Channel Park Investors Level C has proposed the annexation of 17.6 acres located along Chatham Parkway, just south of the US 64 bypass. The parcel is zoned PDD and is currently vacant, and the recommendation is to hold the public hearing.
And there was no one signed up to this petition, or public hearing. Are there questions for Victoria Vella?
Yes, is this to make way for, allow for the government to, well, since.
Information Center, it will be in the locations.
Anything further? And then I'll ask the motion to go out of public hearing. Seconded by Mike Fiocco. Those favoring hates, please. We are now at the point of our regular meeting agenda.
Can I propose a quick break? Quick timeout. But, thank you.
Moved by John Monnet, seconded by Mike Fiocco. Those favoring hates, please. It's about the topic of this. And the motion by John Monnet, seconded by Mike Fiocco, to reconvene, and as we do, we know that the next thing on the agenda is citizens' matters. And the public expression period is a timed, at three minutes only, section that is, there are three speakers tonight on tree protection, which is on the agenda, but the board, how does the board feel about having speakers on the agenda? Yes, that, we've made that in the past. And so the first speaker is Lynn Kiefer. We've been asked if you, if people would speak more directly into the microphone, so that folks in the back can hear well, and that includes us as well.
How's that? Great. Okay, thank you. Thanks for letting me speak, and I wanted to first thank you for passing those three resolutions on clean energy and equal rights amendment and Earth Day, all very important. I'm speaking about the Chatham Parks revised tree protection ordinance from April 17th, and there are indeed some improvements and some good changes that certainly would not have come about unless you, as the board, have not asked for them. So thank you for asking for those to be clarified or improved, but I think more work still needs to be done. And if these tree protection rules are going to make a reality of Chatham Parks' claim that they will never fall below 50% tree canopy, and will have more trees in most cities in North Carolina, which of course was in the most recent Chatham County line in their ad, we still don't see how that is going to be possible. Are they, are they really just going to be counting all the trees that haven't been cut yet? For example, in the southern part of Chatham Park before it's ever developed, are they counting saplings that are really too small to be called tree canopy? So I'd say our biggest concern is that Chatham Park is not going to require trees on individual lots. And I provided you the map from their North Village Small Area Plan, that's on your paper here that I just handed you. This is from, you know, this is from the submission they did in March of 2017, and we imagine there will be some changes, but it gives you a good, good graphic way of seeing how much will be in these individual lots that would all be allowed to be clear cut. Perhaps they won't be. Perhaps developers would see the value of trees and not clear cut them, but this is a, all that yellow could be clear cut. And this is right next to the Haw River. This is areas that they consider some of their largest lot sizes. And we would just highly recommend that you require some trees saved on individual lots throughout Chatham Park. You know, it just doesn't quite seem right that most of the trees that will be saved will be the ones in the required riparian buffers, or in what they call an open space. So it just feels like it's going to end up that the people that can afford it, to live near those riparian buffers in the open space and the larger lots along those edges, will be the ones to own the trees. But everybody needs trees, and we've talked about that a lot before. The psychological and physical benefits of living near trees is well documented. There's also the question of whether the existing element would use this tree coverage planning area, which still is not very, very clear to me how it works. The psychological and physical benefits of living near trees is well documented. There's also the question of whether the existing element would use this tree coverage planning area, which still is not very, very clear to me how it works, but it looks like you could consolidate and average different kinds of development and actually end up preserving less trees. And I hope you will look at that in more detail. And we no longer see this 50-foot setback of forested natural vegetation on the residential lots closest to the Haw River buffer. So I really hope you will not vote to approve this revised tree protection element tonight, but dig deeper into finding ways that we can actually preserve more trees in Chatham Park. Right now, you're all the stands between those trees being removed, and along with the trees are removed are all the animals that are living there right now to call it home. Songbirds, foxes, owls, you know, lots and lots of animals, and there is no other place that they can go once those trees are taken down. So on Earth Day, I'd ask you to save more trees in Chatham Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine Kier. The next speaker is Martha Almond.
Hi, I'm Martha Almond. I live at 49 Pittsburgh School Road, and I'm not here really to talk about the trees, but on Earth Day and with climate change, I want to talk about flooding in a bridge. The areas at the culvert slash bridge at Pittsburgh Elementary and 5501, as you know, flooded again on, I believe it was Friday the 12th. There was a lot of erosion that occurred with this. I don't know if any of you guys have looked at that. The town has since come in and put in some riprap, and I appreciate that because that's the only thing that's going to save us from losing everything. I'm wondering if with this most recent event, if that will change the design that the engineers gave the town for fixing that area because of the significant erosion. It also begs the question, had there actually been the repair done? Had the new culvert been there, even though it's going to be bigger than the existing one, because the water was coming so rapidly across that, I believe we would be right back in the same boat where we are now with nothing there. I would implore the town to reconsider if there's any way possible to actually put a bridge there as opposed to a culvert. And I would also want to think, is there anything we can do upstream to stop or to at least slow down the flow of water? If you guys haven't seen it, I did take lots of videos, you know, I witnessed this event. This is the third time in the last year that water has overcome that culvert and come over the bridge, over the pavement. The neighbors across the street actually had water in their house again for the third time. It also, water went over during Hurricane Matthew. It wasn't, the extent was not nearly as much as it is with these most recent storms, but the one on Friday two weeks ago, that was just a springtime thunderstorm. I, with climate change, I realize it's going to continue, but as a property owner there, it's just a little concerning when I see this culvert actually act as a dam and hold the water back, and then the water comes over it. So that's, I guess that's all I just wanted to say is if there's anything I can offer opinion-wise, you know, I've been up in this house for a long time, and if there's anything you guys can do to help, help reduce any of the water that's going down through there, that would be terrific.
Ms. Almond, you mentioned the, what you experienced, what in your house was that, I'm sorry, I missed who you were referring to. Your immediate neighbors?
It is, the folks across the street, the folks across the street are not, they're not unfriendly, but they're also not the, the hey, how you doing neighbor kind of folks. They, I've not spoken to them since the flooding with Hurricane, with Fran, I'm sorry, Florence, but when we were watching, it was clear that the water came up. They've done a lot of renovations to the house. They put new doors in the front, but it's clear that the water was above the level. Unfortunately.
They have a green car driveway, is that right?
They, they do.
The one that's driving on the north side of the street.
Yes, that's correct.
The gas station.
That's correct. And yes, and they have, they, that, they did put that driveway in when they moved into the house a few years ago. That wasn't there previous to that moving there.
Not just by, by it.
They've also put now some, they, they built a berm, and I don't know if that will be helpful or not. If that's an option, could we build berms in other places along this creek? I just, anything to help. Maybe, so, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Next, we have J.C. Garbutt.
Yes, hello, I'm J.C. Garbutt. I'm the Chair of the Grand Trees of Chatham, and I wanted to talk about a couple of things. One is to make a request and another is to offer an invitation. First, let me say the Grand Trees of Chatham, not all of you may know what that is, but we're an organization that recognizes grand trees in Chatham County, and we actually have a number of state champions, even a few national champions in the entire United States, right here in Chatham County. So that's something to be very proud of for all of us. And we also provide education and try to help people learn about trees. And so clearly, one of the key things that's happening right now is with Chatham Park and the Chatham Park Element and the Tree Element, and we've communicated with the board and the mayor and encouraged, I think one of our key points, which Elaine had referred to as well, is really to not just think about a canopy, but think about how do you protect trees and their ecosystems? Because they're not just simple items that stand alone. They really stand as part of an entire natural area, and that's so important, 7,000 acres of Chatham County, that we try to protect some of the key natural areas that we have. If we lose them, they could be gone for a very, very long time, and they're very important to all of us. So I really urge, you know, the board to think very carefully about this issue. It's a big decision, and I know you guys are hopefully, on Earth Day particularly, make a really reasoned and thoughtful decision here for all our future generations. But I also wanted to offer an invitation to the board, to the mayor, to the staff, and to everybody here, that St. Bartholomew's Church this Wednesday evening just happens to be having a film called Call of the Forest, which is a movie about sort of the extraordinary forests of the northern hemisphere and all the things they do for nature, but also for humans, and that's going to be free, and it's playing 6:30 at St. Bart's. And hopefully, some people can make it to get a sense of, I think it's a very personal message of kind of what does a tree really, and trees and what they do, do for us. And so I urge people to come, and I urge you guys to think carefully as we think about this decision with Chatham Park. Thank you. Wednesday evening, 6:30, St. Bart's Church, Call of the Forest.
And J.C., I had the most wonderful experience of having a tour around town by one of your members, Margaret Yon.
Yes, yes.
And it was absolutely fascinating. Now, I've been here for 45 years, and I had no idea what exciting trees we have in downtown Pittsburgh. And so is there a chance that, that, if you all do periodic tours or?
We do, and people can get their name. Actually, we have a Gmail, GrandTrees of Chatham@gmail.com, and we can get your name on an email list. We do, that White Pines, we just had one about three weeks ago, White Pine Natural Area, as many of you hopefully have been there, is a, an amazing area, 12,000 years sort of remnants from the glacier period, but white pines, which are not native here. And so it's a beautiful, beautiful, like, you feel like you're in the mountains or something.
You could drive by some of the ridges.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I know.
Just one downtown. I mean, it's just so impressive. It just, I mean, I'm not familiar.
Well, and St. Bart's, we've actually given an award to them because they have an amazing, in their cemetery and their grounds of the churches, a variety of really beautiful, beautiful trees. And so I think that even gives the sense of the valley of trees to some extent.
Thank you, J.C.
Thank you, guys.
And Sharon Goddard.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak. As you might guess, I'm going to pile on to what my husband just said. First of all, I did hear J.C. say one thing, that would take a very long time for these ecosystems to return. I think it would be such a long time that we might as well say they will never return. Once we've destroyed them, we can't get them back, and that's simply the way it is. And, and also that the, it's, I wanted to ask you tonight to please, as you look at the additional tree element, to consider whatever you can to preserve the ecosystem that J.C. was talking about. If you cut down, you know, maybe part of the, what is existing in Chatham Park, as you all know, if it's destroyed and there's, let's say, 20 trees in that area, and you plant 20 trees in a different area, you're not going to get the same benefits. The animals won't get the same benefit, the Haw River won't get the same benefit. Trees are part of a community. They don't stand out there by themselves. Their community is what surrounds them. And just like humans, you pull us out of our community and put us off in a desert by ourselves, we're not going to function the same. We're not going to be the same human being. And so trees are much the same way. They exist in a community. And if we destroy that community, it's going to be very hard to get it back, much as if you were put in the middle of a desert, how long would it take you to get your community back? And so I'd just like you to consider that and do whatever you can to preserve the forest that exists now in Chatham Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
All right. We are now at the point in our meeting to hear about updates to issues that have been discussed previously. And oftentimes, I start off with a discussion of meetings that I've been to over the course of time, but instead, in celebration of Earth Day, I would like to offer a challenge to my fellow members of the board and anyone else in the audience who wishes to do so. And I refer to this as our Water Consumption Challenge. Starting next month, you have the opportunity to submit your water bill for the challenge. And we talked a little bit at the meeting the other night about how unfair that would be, in that Mr. Bonnet, for example, has two small children in his house who probably consume more water than Pamela Baldwin.
A lot of laundry.
But nonetheless, we're trying to design a system whereby we can look at the water bill and look at the number of people who live in the household, and the, the member of the board and the audience, if you wish to participate, who comes in with the lowest water bill and, and still has friends, would, would get something spectacular, like perhaps a lollipop or something. Now, there is an expectation of privacy somewhat in terms of water bill. It's like going through some trash, and so, so what we're going to do, and I've spoken with Heather Heach, our Finance Director, she's willing to, to release information about people's water bills if you sign a release for her purposes, so that she's not disposing something that later someone would come back and say was inappropriate. So is the board willing to take on the challenge, the water challenge? And Mr. Griesbeck and Mr. Messick and Ms. Lloyd and Chief of Police, how do we feel about their decision?
I have a teenage daughter, takes four-hour showers.
That's called hydro there.
Yeah. If I can cut them to three, I'd probably win.
I'm a local sheriff.
And Jeff Jones, our Planning Director. He's not, he's not in the jurisdiction. And I don't think you are either, our, our engineer. So I do think we need to solicit the, the participation of our water supervisor. Are you in the jury session?
I'm not.
Okay, well, think about it, and, and if anyone is interested, we will be starting this in May, and, and it's, I think we need to do it for a whole month.
Is our ability to cycle all in one month or?
No, it's essentially from the middle of one month to the middle of the next.
Okay, well, we'll start in the middle of May and give you a few of the jeans.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I commend you for this initiative. I think this might actually give my children the motivation to understand they don't have to throw their clothes in the water every time they wear them. Wear that pair of jeans twice.
Well, it may be motivation for the police chief, teenage daughter.
It's a financial motivation outside.
So, anyway, well, thank you all for being, are there, are there updates in meetings that people have attended, and then we'll go to the next. Okay, Ryan Griesbeck.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think in the interest of time, I'll, with my comments, highlighting one particular item, mentioned, discussed a little bit earlier tonight during the Senate comments, the Pittsburgh Elementary School Bridge, as I indicated in my update, it, FEMA, as you recall, that we're receiving, or we're expecting to receive reimbursement from FEMA for the work to the bridge and the culvert structure as a result of the hurricane. One of the things that we discussed with you previously in an update was that FEMA would require what's called a conditional letter, a MAP revision or a CLOMRA for short. That's essentially a statement on how the proposed project would affect this one plan and probably oversimplifying that a little bit. But in this case, the worst-case scenario, I guess so to speak, is coming true, and that they are requiring a CLOMRA, so that's going to add a little bit of time to the project. We're still expecting to complete it by the end of the year. However, I think given that, what we're considering at the moment, and Mr. Potte, Streets and Utilities Director, had originally obtained an estimate to, to restore the bridge and the culvert structure to some sort of passable form, close to what it was previously, he's freshened up that, that estimate. We can get someone in there to make the road passable by, I think, either start on May 6th, depending on the contractor, of course, we're entering into the busy season of contractors, but, but we would expect that work to begin as early as May 6th or as late as May 2nd. So we will definitely take to the comments that were made tonight about, about the structure and do what we can. I think that, I think as a rule, because of, of the condition of the structure as it is right now, there's not much structure to it actually, but the structure such as it is, is actually lower in the stream bed, and probably that sort of visually and physically affects a little more than what it would be if it were fully restored. So I don't, I don't expect a restored structure to undergo that same type of visible damage that was experienced recently. But certainly, it's something to keep our eye on, and we'll take a look at more riprap and more bank work, I think, as a result as we go along. But again, I think in the interest of safety and traffic, I think it's, it's probably to our, to our advantage to open that now, pay a little bit of a cost in terms of premium and removal of materials once we begin, once we begin, we begin the permanent work. But I think the, the advantage to having that open from a safety and traffic perspective, I think outweighs the cost that we'd give the additional material removal once the term of work. And as I said, I kind of wanted to leave my comments due to the length of the meeting tonight, so if you do have any other comments or questions, please, you know, feel free to ask now, or we can talk later.
I'm curious about this temporary fix, maybe we can start in May. How long would it take to have that finished?
Just a few days.
Just a few days, okay. And would it be passable until we started construction on the, made the permanent solution? How long would it take to build the permanent solution?
We plan to have a FEMA period at Chatham, we're getting a little bit on the weather, but about two months.
Temporary would be about six months. And that's not a FEMA reimbursement?
We haven't, we temporary, we haven't, we haven't gotten an answer on that yet. It's our hope that it would be.
Was it law enforcement?
Twenty-three thousand dollars.
I want to do that by.
Twenty-three thousand dollars.
And is that planned also with the sidewalk that has been requested?
The temporary wouldn't be, the permanent would. I can guarantee that the temporary would have, you know, a lavish walkway. See what we can do otherwise.
I'll be pleased to update more of the elements I think that are left. So I'll hold in detail about that. The board will note that we've got a number of meetings upcoming. Joint meeting with the county board commissioners on May 9th, the U D O workshop on the 20th.
Is that an agenda for the board meeting?
This was a meeting, I think, that you had personally.
Yeah.
So it kind of went dormant when the previous county manager was in process of retiring. The new county manager takes office, goes through the emails and.
Oh.
I think that was the joint, I think that's the joint meeting with, I think it was Chatham Park related items.
Or schools.
For schools.
A quarterly meeting so that we all got around the table and said what's the progress of the. Yes, just for needing schools. Well, I would ask specifically for schools because it's modest to do sight of that importance to future growth. So if that's what it is, okay.
Does the Board of Education invite you?
There, so that was the idea of Chatham Park. And it wasn't necessarily full board, honestly. It was for the town, county, school board, Chatham Park, all to sit in a room once a quarter and look at the stats for what development's coming, what development occurred, what the demand on schools is likely to be, when, should funds be expended, that kind of thing. Because I didn't want us to go two years without thinking about it and say, oh, shoot, we should have done something about that.
I think this, the May 9th meeting is for downtown enforcement and Chatham Park discussion is not understanding.
In May's going to be a busy month. It looks like the next meeting of the Bicycle Ped Plan, Bike Ped Plan is going to be in May. May 16th. So.
We have a big time, a big time thing. Please. I don't have that only right now, but I will just.
Very good.
Probably evening. Yeah, okay, so it's 4:30 to 6:30. It's an open house for the public. We all will be. Bike Ped.
Thank you. All right, thank you. As to old business, we did, we moved number five, which is the amendment for the sand reinforcement over to be the first item of old business, is that correct? Or should we make it the last item? Make it the last item? Okay. Then, in that case, we next have a discussion of unregulated chemicals with Elizabeth Goodson, Adam Pickett, and CDM Smith. And as people are rising to go to the podium, I was heading to the gym this morning and heard on national public radio, especially of emerging unregulated chemicals. And it was four minutes of very interesting stuff coming from the National Institutes of Health and spoke about a river in North Carolina, a river basin, which is stuffed full of PFAS and PFOS and PFOS and F O S.
I think we'll get here a little bit more about that here in a few minutes.
I think so.
So I'm just going to take a second to introduce, the CDM Smith team is here to give an update on the nitrogen contaminants, information that they're working on with relation to our overall project for the water plant expansion and water supply study. And so I'm going to let them take it away and then if you've got questions, Adam and I think they're over here and they can probably answer those in addition.
Just want to say one thing before we start, it doesn't seem like it's been available all along.
Yeah.
It's part of our agenda and I think that people aren't interested.
I noted that it was, I noted that it was draft, but.
The letter, I did notice on the website, we're thinking we get that.
Yes, well, but the agenda.
You're referring to the report, the tech memo?
The report.
Okay.
Yes.
And you may want to, you know, your discretion, you may want to wait until it's final for us because we're still receiving comments from city staff. We've also given it to Dela Kanapi at NC State and asked for feedback from him. And so, you know, our intention is not to not disclose it, but just to make sure the right version of it is out there. So I don't think there'll be much of whether he's published the draft or waiting for.
I mean, I think so because usually if it's something that's being presented publicly at meetings, we'll also have it online.
Sure. But I appreciate your desire to write. Sure. It's complicated, complicated material, for sure. And what are our margins necessarily? That's, that's right. And, okay, we'll jump into it. So as Elizabeth said, Bill Dobegen and Reed Barton, myself, are here to give an update. We were last here two months ago. And as you know, we're working on a broader scope for the town, looking at long-range water supply and what that means for your existing facility as well as some other potential future facilities that the town may own in part or won't be dealing with water. So as a piece of that, we, first, the original intention of our scope was to include it all as one deliverable in the end, you know, a report that contained all these many tasks together. However, given the pressing need of this one issue to get it as quickly as possible, we were asked to pull it out and expedite the emerging contaminant evaluation. So that's what we've done and that's why it's a standalone memo. Go to the next slide. All right. Okay, so the memo, this overview essentially follows not only the memo, but how we're going to talk through the issue today. It will take about 12, we're aiming at about 12 minutes, explain all things and then open it up to questions. So the, as I mentioned, the draft memo has been submitted for comment and review. In that memo, we go through existing data sets and talk about what they tell us about the nature of the water quality and how that relates back to the existing treatment at the plant and what, going down to the third major bullet on here, what treatment options would be needed to address what we've termed target contaminants. And as you guys know, it's 1-4-doxine and PFAS compounds, which for everybody's benefit, PFAS stands for per and polyfluoralephal substances. And we have no PFAS 101 slides here. I don't know if you remember that from last time. We will.
We've been there.
We've been there, right. Okay. And the last part, and I think we're going to spend most of our time discussing today, is next steps. Where we recommend you go from here. So in the Hall River, and Mayor, I want to ask the radio report that you're listening to, you said a river basin, was it the Cape Fear River Basin? So as many of you probably know, the Hall River is a part of the Cape Fear River Basin. So that stretches all the way from Reevesville. I don't think it goes as high as Eaton, but essentially Reevesville through Greensville, Burlington. It's several rivers that come together and the Cape, it's not called the Cape Fear until downstream of Jordan Lake. In fact, I found it interesting, I've heard this story as well, but it specifically did not mention which river basin it was, instead of a river basin in North Carolina.
The article, the article I showed on the website, it showed a picture of the river.
Okay, but in the text it said a river. Okay, that was nice of them. Yeah. Okay, so the data sets that we went through as a part of this study was data sets provided by NC State University. Particularly, they had a lot of data concentrated in 2013 to 2018. I think a lot of these data sets you may have seen before or seen pieces of. The Hall River Assembly provided data to us and it was large sampling events in 2018, very helpful data set. DEQ has a number of data sets that are available online, so we use those in our analysis. And then the town itself has been collecting data sets, some of that in collaboration with NC State to provide the lab services. So a lot of data available. The one data set that we were not able to get in the time period was the Duke data set, but I think that part of their data set is the Hall River Assembly. It's understandable. I think they were, they haven't quite published everything and they're wanting to hold their data until it was published. So I don't think it would have changed anything, probably until it's more of the same. So I'm not going to show you all the data because I'm just going to show you two summary slides of the data and we can get into more of the treatment tonight. So this is 1-4-doxine and this is only from 2018 data. And if I can come up here and I'll try to project my voice here, we've got raw water in this column and that's water right out of the river. And generally, we're looking at raw water right next to your intake, right? Your intake for your water plant. And then we have finished water. Finished water implies it's gone through your treatment plant and it's ready to be sent out to customers. So 1-4-doxine, in this time, in this time period, the sample's taken in 2018, had maximum seven micrograms per liter in the river. After it went through the treatment process, it was only reduced down to six micrograms per liter. So, you know, 15% reduction or so in the plant. Average, similar story, the average of all the samples showed that it's 4.1 micrograms per liter in the river and after it went through the plant. What that tells us is what, what we've already talked about, which is the plant wasn't designed for treating 1-4-doxine. All right, let's move on to similar data set for PFAS. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay. So I've color coded this to facilitate popping, you know, causing the right things to come into view. So what we've got here under the location column are different places where samples were taken. And the second column has either RW or DW. RW means it's from the river, stands for raw water, and DW, drinking water, means it was taken from, from a tap somewhere in the system. So the top and what you have in all of these columns from the right over are different PFAS species that are found in the Hall River. Probably the one that's the most famous here is on the far right, PFOWA, stands for perfluorocyanic acid, which is one of the ones that gets a lot of press. So the first row shows levels of PFAS in Shallowford, which is above Burlington. The next row shows also in the Hall River but below Burlington, closer to Pittsburgh. Going on to the tan rows, you have a Hall River item. So that's essentially what, right next to your intake. This is what, what is being, coming into your, your treatment plant. And as you see, the concentration has actually gone up as you're going down the river. It's getting higher as you get closer to your intake. What's interesting is on this particular day when the samples were taken, there was a reduction in PFAS in your water plant. So in each one of these samples, it was 86.5 PFAS in the river and then it was reduced down to 80.7 in the Pittsburgh library. I don't know the exact tap, but some tap in the library where the samples were taken. Same thing you'd go across PFPEA, it was 244 in the river, same day, the sample was 205 in the library. So what that shows you is, again, emphasizing the point that, that the treatment facilities at, at the water plant were not designed for removal of these. In fact, we didn't even know these were in the water until a couple of years ago, right? So the plant's decade old, just wasn't designed for it. The last line is just kind of as an FYI, the last two lines of purple, shows what is in Jordan Lake. So the Hall River dilutes when it, when it gets to Jordan Lake. It's a lot more water, there's less, there's more water per PFAS compounds. So you get a great, you get a jump down, the lower concentrations of PFAS in Jordan Lake. And then what they're seeing in the Apex Library, so Cary Apex, share a water plant and the distribution network. And so they're lower, but it's really the same story. Seventeen goes down to fifteen. Their plant's not taking it out either. So it's, your neighbors are dealing with similar issues. Okay, so I'm going to hand it over to Bill. Bill's going to talk about the solution.
Thank you, Reed. So we've evaluated advanced treatment technologies that are used for removal of these targeted compounds. I'll briefly explain them. Ion exchange is where you have beads in a pressure vessel. These blue tanks have the beads inside of them. The beads are what remove the contaminants such as the PFAS compounds. Low-pressure reverse osmosis is where you have a membrane, a semi-permeable membrane rolled up like a paper towel roll that's, to get a large surface area of this membrane in each of these eight-inch diameter pressure vessels. So that's how low-pressure reverse osmosis works. And note the acronyms, you'll be seeing these acronyms throughout the presentation. We also will use the acronym RO to simplify it, just reverse osmosis. Granular activated carbon is typically also in pressure vessels. It's using granular activated carbon grains, which are like the size of a sand grain approximately, but appears like charcoal, it's black. So it absorbs contaminants out of the water. Try not to go two hours on that. Okay. So that's the.
Absorption.
Nope. A D absorption, which I could talk another hour about. Let's move on. UV advanced oxidation process, that's where you irradiate the water with UV radiation, very high energy input, and also add a little chlorine or peroxide to help catalyze the process to get hydroxyl radicals which oxidize the organic. So those are the advanced technologies I'm going to be talking about primarily. So we've looked at those applications and you have to combine the technologies to address the different compounds. And I'll briefly illustrate that. On the left here, you can see combinations like granular activated carbon with advanced oxidation process. Why do we combine them? Because advanced oxidation process, that's the one that gets 1-4-doxine. It's excellent for 1-4-doxine. GAC does very little for 1-4-doxine by itself. But GAC is pretty good for PFAS, fair for bromide, brominated, fairly good, and PPTP's excellent. So that's why that's a combination. Now, if you add ion exchange, it is excellent for the bromide by ion exchange, so it gets all of these up to excellent, which is the only combination. You can see it takes a lot of other items to match up to reverse osmosis, which is basically your best available technology for these compounds. Ion exchange without the GAC is poor for the pharmaceuticals and personal care products and endocrine disruptors. So that gives you an idea of the treatment. You'll be seeing combinations of technologies, all except for reverse osmosis. So here's pilot testing. One needs pilot testing to quantify how well the ion exchange, the granular activated carbon, how well they will perform. And this is actually pilot testing pictures from the Cary Apex Water Plant, right down the road from you. We did this pilot testing last year, so we have some data to show you, but that, it's specific to their water, which is Jordan Lake water. It'll, it'll show you the type of information you can glean from pilot testing. So let me explain what you're seeing here. These are small columns here, the clear PVC columns are the pilot test columns. What's behind is a full-scale filter. This is in the full-scale filter gallery. So the blue piping you're seeing, that's the full-scale filter effluent pipe. And we branch off from that with these small tubes to feed water to the pilot test equipment. And then we show a zoom in here on the right of the pilot test equipment. The larger clear PVC pipe is four-inch diameter with granular activated carbon in it. So that gives you a feel for how it looks, the beads, in this case, like black sand. And these are your ion exchange reference, two different ion exchange media. You can see their different colors appear differently. If you zoom in on it, it looks like a little bead. This shows you the reverse osmosis, which we also pilot tested at Cary. In this case, we are in their finished water pump stations. We can make use of the pressure of the finished water pumps to feed the reverse osmosis and force the water. You only need about 100, 150 TSI to. You only need about 100, 150 PSI to push the water through this semi-permeable membrane to give you very clean water on the other side while holding back the PFAS and other contaminants. And that's another GAC column on the left. So, that's the pilot test technologies, pretty easily could be done at your facility. You saw how small they are, they can sit in the filter gallery, finished water pump station of your facility. Okay? So, here's the results we had at Cary Apex. And this is in August. You can see two samples, August 8th and August 20th, blue for the August 8th and the burnt orange for August 20th. We started the test in July, so this is after one month of operation. And you can see their raw water, this is total per-polyfluoroalkyl substances in nanogram per liter on the Y-axis. We were measuring 45 different PFAS compounds, adding it all up, and what was the concentration in range of 120 to 150 nanogram per liter in the raw water. They were at the time feeding a lot of powdered activated carbon, 30 to 40 parts per million. So, they got pretty good removal just from their existing processes, removed about half of them. But then, here's what we're pilot testing, post-treatment. What can we do? Can we take this stuff out? And the answer is absolutely yes. You can see that after one month, we're removing with the talgon ion exchange to below detection level, post-GAC to below detection level, and the reverse osmosis to below detection level. So, the question is, how long does this stuff last and what's it cost? So, to address that, we plot on the same Y-axis the PFAS concentration, total concentration of these 45 compounds in nanogram per liter, and test further out for the rest of the fall of 2018. And what we found is, once we got to October, the granular activated carbon was spent, meaning it had done all it can do, because the water's coming out, the post-GAC, the yellow column, is as high as the water going in, which was the filtered effluent, the burnt orange column. So, the GAC spent in three months, pretty short life. The ion exchange media made it four months, November 20th. These two columns, talgon ion exchange, pyralate ion exchange, they are now above what was coming out of the filtered effluent. So, that's four months. This is all very relevant for costing. What does this stuff cost to operate? Because you got to change this stuff out once it's spent.
Could have meant the RO?
Oh, thank you. The RO, you can't see, so I forgot to note the RO. Thank you, Reed. RO in gray down here, you don't see up here because it was below detection all case.
It's consistent because the filter doesn't fill up.
Yeah, well, RO is a semi-permeable membrane. Those PFAS compounds cannot make it through. So, below detect here, below detect here. It's where it would have been, it's between the burnt orange and the yellows. So, that's the gap, that's the RO data, it's below detection.
It's consistent and does decline in.
It's a wonderful thing, yeah. Yeah, some, a little bit of 1-4 dioxin can get through, very small amount, a little bit of basically low molecular weight stuff in very trace concentrations can get through. So, it's not 100% removal, but you can see it's the best technology available.
So, it lasts cycle to that membrane?
Yes. Membranes last, the manufacturer will say seven years, sometimes it lasts longer. Reed's visited a number of plants where it lasted longer. I will go with the manufacturer. Okay? So, that.
I'm just curious, so the membrane, is it continuing to absorb the PFAS?
It does not absorb. It, it's exclusion, it's filtering. It won't let it through.
Where does it go?
It stays in the concentrate. So, with any treatment, you're going to end up with, I have no idea what it is.
Right fix it.
Oh, okay. With any treatment, you have some residual string, if you will. With granular activated carbon, when you're done, you have this granular activated carbon removed. It's got to go somewhere and be disposed of. It burnt, burned, whatever. With reverse osmosis, because it's a size exclusion, you have a side stream process of what they call concentrate. So, roughly 10% of the water, you end up as concentrate. So, the most logical thing to do with it would be to treat it, put it back in the river, right? Because it came from the river. So, you're just putting back in the river what came from the river. So, that's what's usually done with concentrate. With granular activated carbon, with ion exchange, you have to do something with it. You have to dispose of it, so. Adequate explanation?
Yeah, I remember the 10%.
Okay. All right, so cost.
We also were talking about the possibility of that being reused water.
Yeah, sure.
As a way to dispose of it or utilize maybe?
Certainly, yeah. So, the logical question for engineers, what's it cost? We can give you some very preliminary planning level capital costs, so we're doing that. We cannot give you operation costs until we do pilot testing. Because as we illustrated in detail there, you got to know how long will it last? Three months, four months, it's a big difference. Yeah. Okay, so here's some very preliminary planning level capital cost conservative numbers. And you can see the capacity, 2 million gallons per day, 4 million gallons per day, 6 million gallons per day, and then cost for the different technologies. Why do we show 2, 4, and 6? 2 NGD is the size of the existing plant. So, if you wanted to add 10 minutes of granular activated carbon to your existing plant, it's about $5 million. If you want to do 4 NGD, you have to also increase, expand the existing plant and upgrade it. So, in addition to these costs, which are just the advanced treatment costs, you would have the cost of expanding and upgrading the existing plant, which is under study as part of the overall study referred to for 4 NGD. It's going to land somewhere between 10 and 15 million to get there for the conventional plant. All right. So, back to what's it cost for just the advanced treatment? I mentioned 5 million for 10 minutes GAC, 8 million for 20 minutes, 3 million for ion exchange at 2 minutes, which performed similarly, it actually lasted longer in Cary, remember, than the GAC for the PFAS compounds. And low-pressure reverse osmosis, 11 million. So, yes, LPRO gives you your best treatment, your best water, but it costs more. Not too surprising. Advanced oxidation process at 2 million, but it's got to be combined with those other things, like I showed you ion exchange, GAC. So, those are the basic numbers, and then it's a matter of, okay, when we do this combining, we know RO does great, what about the combination of GAC, ion exchange, and AOP? So, these have pump stations in them also, so it's not just adding this number to that number to this number. There's actually a deduct when you start combining because of the, you don't need three pump stations, you need one pump station. So, you'll see that the combination of ion exchange, GAC, and UV AOP for 2 NGD is 8 million, whereas the LPRO is still at 11 million. So, it is cheaper on capital cost, but if you have to change it out very frequently, it may catch up to the LPRO in overall lifecycle cost. And the only way to know that for sure is to do the pilot testing and have that lifecycle costing done. A note on low-pressure reverse osmosis, which is what you're asking about, you have to get an NPS permit to get rid of the concentrate. But it's actually, all these technologies are in use, even in North Carolina, there's 15 or so reverse osmosis plants. Most of them are very small, some are larger. We're doing a very large one for Brunswick County right now. There's lots of granular activated carbon. We did post-GAC for Winter County, Lay of Bluffs recently, just to name a couple. There's not as much AOP. We actually did AOP for a remediation site in the mountains of North Carolina.
Is there, pardon me, it seems to me that you would need an NPS permit, no matter how you dispose of the concentrate?
Yeah, any water plant needs an NPS permit. You actually have an NPS permit already, so we would try to just amend the existing NPS permit for the concentrate additional.
Or do you put it back in the, some other?
That's right. And there are alternates somewhere it goes. That's beyond this little study, that, looking at your different options.
Yeah, and if you think about, let me jump in here and just say one thing about the NPS permit. So, every water or wastewater treatment facility has an NPS permit, because you can't treat the water without having some waste stream, right? If you're removing something from the water, there's, you know, there's one stream from the river goes into the plant, two streams leave. One goes for people to drink, the other goes back to the river with stuff you didn't want to send to people to drink. And so, that's what we're referring to. There's already, the plant already has a waste stream that is treated and then sent back to the river. And so, this, you have to amend your NPS permit because you are modifying the nature and content of that waste stream. So, you, there's an extensive study that's involved to show state that you'll have no adverse environmental impacts. You have to show the zone of the river that's impacted by when it's, when your additional flow is mixed into the river. There's a pretty, I would say, probably about a year's worth of work to obtain that permit modification. It's not, it's done all the time, but it's not a small effort. They require a lot of information. Okay, so, I'll do the slide next steps, and this is, this is kind of where it's more open discussion, ask any questions that you guys have, and we'll do our best to try and answer them. But where we're proposing to go forward, so Bill described, we've got these contaminants that we want out of the drinking water. We outlined four options, everything from combining activated carbon, ion exchange, and UV in different ways, which has different cost and performance implications, or going all the way to RO, which is kind of like Cadillac, right? Where we, what we'd recommend you do next is what we're calling a screening level pilot evaluation. And that is what Cary just did, but we're recommending you guys do a more abbreviated, focused one, I think theirs was pretty broad. That would give you what's listed in this second bullet, a full lifecycle cost comparison. So, we just showed you capital cost, what you need on day zero to build it. What we, what we can't tell you right now without the running a pilot is, what did it cost to run it for 20 years? Both to build it and then operate it for 20 years? Which is usually an important question, right? Some of these are more expensive than others to operate. And as Bill mentioned, if you're replacing media, whether it's activated carbon or ion exchange every three months, that can be a pretty heavy bill versus reverse osmosis membranes, you might get 10 years in between replacements. So, with a screen level pilot, you'll get information on all four technologies, how they performed, you know, set up a pilot gear plan, how they performed, how long the medias would last, what kind of rejection on 1-4 dioxin you can see with the RO membranes. What, the second bullet I put under here is, is if, if you already know that RO is your preferred option, I would also recommend as a next step, you start on the permit side of it, because it is a lengthy process and can end up being a bottleneck as we're moving forward. Moving down, to move forward in a significant way, there's three key decisions that come to my mind, maybe more, but three key decisions to highlight tonight. One is, these are unregulated contaminants, so you don't have the federal government or the state telling you what to treat to, what level to treat it down to. So, and it's a difficult question, I sympathize with the challenge of what I'm about to say, but we have to pick a goal of what we're treating to. Because if our goal, I'll give you some examples of this. Cape Fear Pua, which is the Wilmington Water Utility, they set a goal of, they took five PFAS compounds, and they said, we want to make sure that our treatment technology keeps the, all five of them added together below 140 nanograms per liter. That was a number they came up with, there's a little bit of logic to it, but it's a number they came up with. They can't point to a regulation that it came from. Another example is Brunswick County. They didn't pick a number, they said, we want the best available technology at the most costly, that is lifecycle cost, lifecycle cost. And that led them towards RO because, as I mentioned, the, they later defined that as, we want more than 90% removal. And if you go to that high level of removal, we want 90% of all this stuff out, it's hard to get there with adsorption media, because you're just replacing, you can do it if you're just replacing it so much. It is a cost to all. So, picking a goal is important. It doesn't have to be a numerical goal, but picking a goal that can help guide us in the recommendations we make. It would be very helpful here in the next, you know, the next couple of months. After we have a goal and we have information on the full lifecycle cost, if you, if you want us to get the lifecycle cost data, then you can select a treatment alternative, pick an option, and make sure it aligns with your long-term plan. And what I mean by aligns with your long-term plan is, Bill showed you options for 2 NGD, 4 NGD, and 6 NGD. And the reason we're showing you all three is because the study that recommends your next expansion at that plant hasn't been completed yet. So, we need to finish that, and then you'll know on that table, am I looking at the 2 NGD line, the 4 NGD line, and the 6 NGD line? So, once we have those three decisions made, I think you're ready to launch forward. You can tell by the looks in the faces, there's a couple of questions on that. You want to ask now, or you want to get the last two goals?
I'm curious, you know, when you had the four paths, it was excellent, good, or there were two that had excellent on all.
Yep.
And one was the reverse osmosis.
That's right.
And one was, yeah.
So.
All of them.
Just you can.
All yes.
Right.
All in sans RO.
That's right.
So, what?
None of these are bad. We wouldn't have put them up here if they were bad options. They're all we're going to do, a better job than your plant is doing right now. I wouldn't say any of them are bad.
What is excellent?
Excellent will be quantified by the pilot testing. In the case of Brunswick County, they define it as over 90% removal.
And so, they achieve excellence?
All those can achieve 90, over 90% removal.
Okay.
But to put a cost number on it, you've got to know for how long.
The ones that say.
Three months, four months? Yeah, excellent.
Or 90% removal, or greater.
Yeah, so, you really need the testing to put the numbers on it. You know, in this report, we don't want to be putting numbers on it, because you got to have the test to go with it. But yeah, excellent is, you can think of it as 90% removal or better.
And what we saw in pilots we've done previously is, we're saying 90%, but we were seeing 98, 99%. You know, that kind of removal, you know, we only hear.
It depends on temperature of the compound, yeah.
So, we can't benefit from another pilot test?
You can. You could say, Reed, we want you to use the Cary data and extrapolate it and go from there. We can, we're just caveatting that it's slightly different water and.
Same space, substantially different water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We definitely recommend a pilot.
The reverse osmosis, there it says requires concentrate disposal and additional process water consumption. Okay. What, it says concentrate disposal, what are those sort of compounds? What would you be doing with that?
Okay, so, membranes, when we pressurize it, we pressurize the water, we pump it up to 100 pound per square inch, and we push it through these membranes. And that pressure pushes water through the membrane, 90% of it goes through that membrane, and 10% of it can't get through and goes out of drain. And that 10% of water that didn't make it through is carrying the PFAS and the 1-4 dioxin, dioxin and the other contaminants you didn't want to get through to your drinking water. That stream is collected and then treated and then returned to the river.
All contaminants. You want that 10% stream.
Right, but, so you were, well, basically you were.
Just dispose.
The same word, basically, that's what it ended up being.
Well, currently, so currently the way the water plant works, and most water plants, they have sand filters, right? And so you run the sand filters for about 96 hours and then you have to backwash them. You send that water back, through them backwards and it, it frees up all the junk that they remove. That water is collected and goes to the same process right now. It goes to a treat, to a waste stream treatment and, and the water that's produced from that waste stream treatment then goes into an outfall that, essentially a creek that returns to the river. So it's the same idea. Disposal means return to a creek.
That's what I was trying to imply. Because I know you were indicated in one, in one of the other slides for that.
Yep.
That, that, that would just get to a point and just stop. It would be, I think, go back.
Yeah, sure. I think I've gone too far.
I see. It's a footnote in one of the other.
Right.
Yeah, you'd have to do something with the concentrate. He explained what is usually done.
I think it's this one, LBRRO, Collesse assumes that MDS permit, MDS means you have a permit from the state to discharge your wastewater to a stream.
I know about what permit. And then also I want to ask you about, you said that to get the permit modified, it would take some time. What do you?
Sure.
How do you find some time?
I would plan on it taking a year. It could take longer than a year, it could take, it could take nine months, it could take 15 months, on average about a year. What the process is, is you would, you first prepare what's called an engineering alternatives, EAA, engineering alternatives, I don't know what the second A stands for. You prepare a report that says, "These are the, all the alternatives that are on the table, and this is why they don't, they aren't as good as the one we're presenting." And of sending the water back to the creek. And then you have to map the creek out, you do, I'm at the word they're called. The word's escaping me. You have to, you have to do, you have to map, map the bottom of the creek out, build a, build a computerized model, it's called core mix model, respecialized system, and it models as we're, as the river flows downstream, and we, we model that river in every condition, flood condition, drought condition, fast water, slow water. And we model all the extremes and we model this outfall coming into the river and we look at the zone impacted, what we call the mixing zone. We look at the impact of this. And the state, they scrutinize it up and down and you spend four months answering all their questions. What they're looking at, are you going to affect any, any species that lives in the river? Any environmental impact? And they, after they approve it, then they put it open for public comment and they send it out to a bunch of federal agencies, Fish and Wildlife, a bunch of federal agencies, and ask them to comment on it. That's why it gets to be a long process. There's just a lot of input that's brought into it. And then after all the questions are addressed, they, they will issue you a permit.
Would it be possible for us to request modification of that MDS for the flows from our drinking water plant? Forgive me for this hand waiting on the engineering side, would like, for that concentrate from the RO system, hypothetical RO system, be pumped to the 3M, to our reuse water system? So that it could be diluted with our reused water and either discharged into Ruffus Creek or sent to 3M as a customer if it meets their needs?
Yeah, I, I think that it's possible to look at that and see if 3M's okay with that and, you know, this water, so imagine this, this concentrate, I can't remember if I said this last time or year, but this, this concentrate, if I put it in a glass, would look as clear as regular drinking water. There would be nothing about it that looked like wastewater. The only thing that would be in it would be the unseen 1-4 dioxide, the unseen PFAS because, thinking about it, the water's already gone through your entire water plant, right? Before it gets to the RO, the RO is a polishing step at the end. Water's already been treated to the point of technically drinkable by federal and state standards. And then this last step, it's removing the PFAS and 1-4 dioxide and concentrating it to about 10 times the concentration it was as it went into the membranes. So if it was 100 parts per trillion going in, then it's 1,000 parts per trillion in that concentrate water. Okay, so they're going to get this water that looks, looks like pristine water and the only difference is it's got, you know, some of the levels of PFAS and 1-4 dioxide that we've seen here. The reason that, the reason that other utilities in the state have argued that, you know, that there's no problem with putting that back in the river and, and it appears that DEQ and EPA have agreed with that, is because you're adding no additional mass of 1-4 dioxide or PFAS to the river. It's simply been a detour. In fact, I had a meeting with, with EPA for a similar project, a different utility, I met with EPA last fall. And we asked them this question, we said, "When a water utility, a town, a county, takes in water from a river, somebody else has polluted it. And they take, they take water in and they, they remove harmful contaminants so people don't drink it, and then they put those harmful contaminants back in the river, do you consider them, what's the word, generator, the generator of that waste?" And they said, "Absolutely not. We want to pursue generators. We want to pursue the cleanup of our rivers, but we don't want towns and counties to bear the bill of remediating what other people have caused." So that, that's one of the central discussion points, I think you'll find yourself at the center of if you go RO, is we're making our water particularly safe for our community to drink, but we're not remediating the problem in the river. In other words, that we're not taking on bulk tasks. So I'm, I'm full disclosure here, that, you'll, you'll find that that's a polarizing topic.
And can I just want to point out, the Ruffus Creek goes into Jordan Lake, not the Hall River. The Jordan Lake first. Everybody knows that, but it's just a point to make, it's not going to go straight into the river.
Yeah, and that's what makes it seem so unfair, is that we've gone to the millions of dollars to remove the chemicals. And, and now we're taking the high concentrate and putting it back in and saying, "Oh, Kerry can deal with that, or Apex can deal with it," or, you know, which is just exactly the same thing that Reed's, well, it's saying to us. Because they're producing it and now we're having to, to deal with it.
So if, I'll throw this out here, and this is not.
If, if you go to your wastewater discharge, then you're recombining your water and the PFAS after people get to drink. Much safer water.
Yes.
You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, but somebody else downstream is going to drink it too. And yes, it's going to be more diluted at the Jordan Lake level, but it's still going to be there and we want to put some of it back into our own.
It, it never goes away. And so with any of these systems, the contaminant will end up somewhere. With the granular activated carbon, it ends up adhered to carbon. And every three months, we dump out tons of carbon and send it away.
To the landfill.
It would be either landfill or incinerator or re, some of the plants actually reburn it to reconstitute its ability to absorb.
This is such a, it does, there's such a new, this is such a new topic, there's, I've heard both. I have not heard whether incineration can actually regenerate PFAS, whether it can get the PFAS on. In other words, any temperature would.
It's a research.
It's, it's under research right now. Universities are speaking. Generally speaking, it's very hard.
Speaking of research subjects, there is research on removing the PFAS from the concentrate. So that, that's big research. I can't, it would add costs, obviously.
Yeah, you can't take that 10% water, you can't take that 10% water and, you know, you could run it over a much smaller GAC module and just, so you'd be disposing of a lot less GAC. You know, we didn't include that in the cost that was shown there.
But I feel like we could use it for these reuse water, for, for industry things.
If it meets their needs. I don't know what they do with their water, but assume they turn to a process and then distribute.
I think that they use it for.
It gets all evaporated.
And also put it down on the roads.
Yeah. So it's a process, washing, washing, washing. And I think it all goes into that quarry, stays in that quarry until it goes to the atmosphere. But you know, that's a lesson. So there would be a concentration effect.
It's certainly complicated. I, you know, it's, it feels like there's not a perfect answer. You know, it's, you know, I'm an environmental engineer, I love the environment. I don't, you know, I've, I've worked on many remediation sites, cleaning up terrible man-made things. I guess where I, where I look at this is I start with getting people's drinking water free of this stuff as a first step, and then I look towards the greater remediation, which is much more than just Pittsburgh.
So this is an excellent presentation. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Bill and Reed. I have done a little bit of figuring because in your draft report, you had reached this stage where you summarized the costs. My summations were wrong because it's, as I pointed out, it's not a plus, 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 it's, there's some pumping that dogs babies from pure pumping. I would ask, as you revised this draft, finalized it, if you could please include, a summary of the cost per one gallon per day so we can compare apples to apples.
Okay.
And is Alice the email person that I sent you trash it, please, because it's incorrect? It was based on that earlier draft and you changed this slide a tiny bit. Excellent is, was supposed to be placed back in one of the cells. It's very compelling, very helpful. I feel like I need to digest it some more. I think understanding this on a one gallon per day unit, preparing those would be very And I don't know what to say about the, the pilot test because I'm sensing that you have achieved a level of, of understanding empirical evidence you've collected from, from those tests elsewhere that can apply to our situation. We're not in a situation where we have an awful lot of money to spare. I think we probably could make some extrapolations to understand the potential lifespan of any of these systems that we'd be fine.
So that, and we can, I don't know, Billy, you want to talk to that at all, but it will, what we found is that those numbers are the ones that get, people get riled up the most about. And so we like for the background, the backing information to be very sound. We can extrapolate from Kerry's. This is, this is a topic that's being addressed all over the state and we have witnessed towns that are neighboring, who are, you know, operating in the same, and I'm speaking about different areas in the state, not this one, but, you know, they, they're, they're covered by the same newspapers, the same TV stations. And when one town says, "We're doing this because it's the best," and the other town says, "We're doing option, the other option because it's the best," and you get, you can, it can become, well, where'd your data come from? And, and so we've, we have experienced, fortunately, where we've experienced that we had the data and it was very clear cut. So I'll just say that as, it could happen. There are multiple towns in this area, in this area that are dealing with it.
Yeah, and the water quality is very different toward the lake to a river. So any extrapolation will have to be conservative and footnoted and qualified because it will be different. Not only by the lake versus the river, but so Kerry's feeding this powder carbon in large quantities, so that bias that data set.
And our concentration's higher.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, for example, Greensboro, Kerry, Fayetteville, and Pittsburgh, we're all dealing with it directly. There are others that are, you know, doing this right now, but they will be dealing it probably at some point.
So Reed or, or Bill? One of the things that occurs to me is that the lifespan, useful lifespan of either the ion exchange or the granular activated carbon, it's going to be a curve presumably. How do you deal with that in your pilot test? Do you have a breakthrough curve in you?
We generate a curve.
It's not a curve, it's a breakthrough.
It's a breakthrough curve. So it's on your soil, right? It'll start and it'll ramp up and then it'll ramp down, like first order increase, first order tail off. So to, how to deal with it, you've got to collect more data.
Just measure it.
Like, yeah, if you, if you measure data every month and it's a six-month breakthrough, you'll see the curve.
I think what he's referring to is, I think this answers your question. We would design so you had two vessels in series, right? So, so as one is exhausting, the other one was, they're changed on different cycles. So one is new and one is getting old and you're not relying on any one of those two vessels to do all the treatment. So you don't have a moment where, "Oops, I didn't order the GAC this month," it's all broken.
Yeah. And it depends on that, the goal, which Reed mentioned earlier. If you have a goal of 90% removal, then the break, the breakthrough, you're at the front of the breakthrough curve, so you've got to change it much more frequently.
And that affects Mr. Pickett's costs and operational.
Very.
And.
Yeah.
Thinking of your experience in other communities and those of your peers in the industry, are you able to tell us what other municipalities have chosen reverse osmosis and what options they're taking with their concentrate?
As Bill mentioned, there's more than a dozen reverse osmosis plants or nanofiltration reverse osmosis are pretty much the same thing. The amount of salt they reject is the only difference. So consider both of those technologies. More than a dozen plants, most of them are in a coastal plain. And so for instance, Wilmington has a nanofiltration plant and it discharges the concentrate into the intercoastal water. The one that, as Bill had mentioned earlier, is Brunswick County and it's a very large, it's a 36 million gallon a day water plant, or it's under expansion design right now. They're doing, they're adding reverse osmosis for Gen X, for PFAS removal. They are, I would say pioneering some of this in a sense that not reverse osmosis is well-established, but they are going to be one of the larger facilities in the US that's using it for PFAS removal. They are, are.
As they're near the coast, they're probably also.
They're 10 miles to the coast, they're going to a freshwater river with their concentrate, so that they're, they're the same. The only difference with them is there are no water intakes, other town water intakes below them. So one, one thing they have going for them.
How about landlocked comparables? Those are not going to go for that.
Greensboro is planning on doing GAC. They are soon, they're planning on, after July 1st, their budget includes it, so sometime after July 1st, they'll start designing a GAC facility. It's a 24 billion gallon a day plant in downtown Greensboro. And they plan to, they are, they have a, a company that's developing a, it's called a fate and transport model, but it's a fancy computer model that would predict when you need to turn the GAC on or off based on rainfall. They're going, they're spending a lot on developing a model to say when to flip a switch on or off. Their, their PFAS issues come from a plume that the fire training area of the airport. Their, their PFAS issues come from a plume that the fire training area of the airport created. The fire training foam was the source. If, if it rains, it, it washes out a creek, and that creek just sends very large amounts right to their intake of the water plant. And so they, they won't be turning theirs on and off, but, but constructing GAC. Wilmington is doing GAC. They were largely, they're an industrial complex, and they have no more area to expand, but they do not have enough room for RO. So that was largely played into their decision. Any other examples? Pender County?
Chesapeake, somewhere to Brunswick where it's near the coast, but upstream, discharges to the river.
Oh, London.
Several.
London? London uses our.
City of London?
City of London.
It's a new plant. It's part, part of their water stream. There's several Massachusetts, there's several out there that use our.
Well, there's enough details here that I would ask if people, this is possible within constraints of the current contract to sort of this down and help us understand comparables.
Sure.
Why do you, Bill?
Yeah, so there's not a lot doing RO. Most, I would say, there are more facilities doing GAC and ion exchange. Mostly GAC.
It depends on what you're talking about. For PFAS, GAC is most common currently. For, for this blend, we call the Cape Fear River Basin, it's very unique to the Cape Fear River Basin.
Really? So others are not needing to do all NIX GAC plus IAV?
Most of the utilities, drinking surface water on the Cape Fear River Basin, the larger utilities are investigating, as you are.
So nationwide, there's no one else who's dealing with this particular cocktail of contaminants?
This particular cocktail is, is rather unique. You know, when, when you look at the occurrence data chart, there's this big blob on Cape Fear River Basin for PFAS that happens to also be used in the Ro. That said, there, there are cocktails that are being treated with reverse osmosis in other locations we just discussed, and with granular activity carbon in other locations, et cetera.
So there, there's hotspots. We have a hotspot here in Cape Fear River Basin. There's a hotspot in Alabama, North Georgia and Alabama, and it comes out of PFAS. It comes out of, there's a town in North Georgia where most of the carpet, carpeting industry's on, and it creates a lot of PFAS, and every river that comes out of there essentially leads to the Tennessee River in Alabama. Every community on that river is dealing with this. There, I believe it's Michigan, not Wisconsin, had a big issue with this.
PFAS is much more ubiquitous than one port oxin. One port oxin has maybe three large hotspots in this state.
Yeah.
...buying them are the flood fields coming out of Kane Creek and Dry Creek particularly, some other creeks as well. And that's all been documented, it's not just, you know, guessing. These are the studies that were done by Detmuth as well as the people from the GAC out of Research Chatham Park.
Yeah, and I wouldn't anticipate some of the bio solids from the wastewater plants in Burlington and other places being land applied, you know, that's a steady source, not going to go anywhere. One of the big takeaways here, regardless of which technology you would lean towards, and I think there's pros and cons to all of them, and all of them are justifiable, and indifferent to get out. A case could be made for all four of them, but I would recommend that, that one of them be chosen at some point because you have no control over what goes down that river. You know, it's like, it's like the Lower Cape Fear dealt with Kim Ors, you remember when that had? They had no, they had no notice and no control, and it was on random days, Kim Ors would just hit the switch and tens of thousands of parts per million of PFAS would go into the river. And they can't taste it, they get no warning, they don't even know if they drink it or not. They just know that that practice has been going on for thirty years, and was it, was it ethical or legal? No, but it was still going on. And, so, you know, I think probably most days, even if most days you can get good samples out of the river, there are still polluters upstream that are not concerned about the impact you're drinking.
Well, and Adam, when you and I first started talking about this, the, it seemed the higher concentrations were coming in the greater flow, which led one to believe that when there was a high flow, companies upstream were purposely releasing. And I don't know that they're seeing that same thing anymore.
It's hard to say, I mean, we've had so much rain, you know, and make, make consider a while, we've had some non-detectics we hadn't had in the past. But no, you're, you're right, during that graph, it was definitely during the high flow seeing more concentration, and that's probably exactly what it was.
Is your plant going to be able to accommodate these technologies, I mean, other than the, than the technology itself? Are we talking about building a new plant?
No, if, if we, to my understanding, of course, I'm going to elaborate, but to my understanding, it will be an existing, another building added, like as a station. But the, the actual plant itself, depending on obviously what size we go with, you know, would matter, but if we were just going to do our existing water plant capacity, then we would just build a dedicated station where it would be like a polishing unit and then go to town.
Yeah, these costs have included a separate building.
Or outdoor.
Outdoor would be a little cheaper.
It's common for the GAC vessels to be outdoor. You'd have to, there are, well, I don't want to go into, there are aspects that you might want to put in a small building because it makes, they won't freeze. When you start to get a smaller diameter pipe, you run into the problem of potentially freezing.
This is Kathleen. Are there further questions? It's almost ten thirty.
You know, Adam.
Thank you so much.
Sure, we'd, we'd be happy to do, you know, the workshop if you needed to further dive in, you know, we can, since we've taken notes on, on the things you've asked us to change from advisor board, if you'd like us to come back for more questions, you know, we can do that.
Well, your old friend Jeff Jones, he's going to talk about the tree protection foundational element.
Thanks, Mayor. In your packet that you received last week was a new revised draft from Chatham Park regarding the tree protection element. We staff received that on Wednesday last week, and we got the package due on Thursday. Staff at the time had not really been able to go through the entire draft, but we did do a cursory review when we received it. It did look like most of the items that were discussed with the board in, in Chatham Park through the various meetings in the past, they either addressed them or, they addressed most of those, those comments. I did meet with Chatham Park today, with Chuck Smith and Eagle, to discuss the element. We met for an hour or so this afternoon. There were some, some items of just administration things that I'm, I'm sort of interested in that we discussed, definitions and terms and how to measure trees when planted. So we talked about those, those items. They gave you their explanation. I think there's still some things that we should continue to think about, particularly the, the term "single-family development," which is not really single-family development, so we've got to really kind of dive in on what that is. It's, I understand the reasoning behind "single-family development," but the term and then the definition included in your, in your draft is, is a little challenging to, to figure out. So with that, I will turn it over to Chatham Park and to you all to have a conversation on the new tree protection element. As you can see, if you went through the element when you received it, the percentages have changed, they've increased in village centers and elsewhere, and, and those were, they saw the comments from, from you all and the public. So if there's any questions for me, I can try to answer those, if not, bring Chatham Park up and you know, can have a conversation about the tree protection element.
I'm curious to know the issue that you have with that definition.
Yeah, okay, so in the definition of "single-family development," it allows for, we'll just read it out loud here, "single-family development is defined as..."
Page two, single-family.
Either you could mark up or the regular clean version is page two. I'll, I'll read it aloud for the audience as well. "Single-family development is defined as development wherein each residential lot may contain a single residential structure which may contain a maximum of three dwelling units or multiple residential structures which contain a maximum of one dwelling unit each." That doesn't really sound like "single-family development," but the explanation from Chatham Park this afternoon, I understand where they're trying to, what they're trying to, the goal of words on the paper, but a traditional "single-family development" in our, in our minds is a, a single-unit home on a lot, not up to three dwelling units or multiple dwelling units on a single lot. So maybe Chatham Park can explain what their, their goal is, and I, and I think their goal is good, so you would have potentially traditional, single-family houses along the street, and then randomly in that, that street pattern, that housing pattern, you might have a structure that looks for all the purposes from the street, like a single-family home, but it has two dwelling units in it, or three dwelling units, on different floors or different configurations. One might think that to be a duplex or a triplex, but that's not what the definition is, that's here, "single-family development." And then the multiple...
My recollection. I mean, I think I liked, and one, it partners back to some affordable housing issues.
Right, and, and we discussed that this afternoon, that that is an affordable housing concept of developing structures that look like single-family homes, that don't look out of character for the, for the neighborhood, but could have up to, in this case, three dwelling units within that structure. I, I get that, I think it's just the term "single-family development," and, and maybe it's just a new term to give to what we want, residential family development or something.
It seems like the townhouses would buy into that.
Well, it, but it could be a town home if it has three dwelling units or less. I guess they could do a, a town home in a row of "single-family development," but it'd be three units or less.
So it, it's...
But a town home typically is, has something to do about the ownership on a, a single unit on a lot, whether it's attached or detached, right? Now, as far as, I think, one of those units that would have three units in it, it would be a condominium, so to speak. That's the way I think about it, because you would own the space and in common from the land with the other two or the other person, the other...
The thing with your definition is that condominium is that has three or less and it still counts as a condominium.
Right, and the definition is here, for one purpose only, to define tree coverage area as whether or not it's in a TCPA or on the lot itself. So we said residential will be part of a TCPA, "single-family residential" would be part of a TCPA, whereas multifamily would be on the lot itself.
It could be on the lot.
And so that definition is solely there to differentiate between TCPA and TCA.
Yeah, and I get the concept, it's just the term "single-family development," when we're talking about multiple dwelling units, is a little, is a little weird. So I don't know if it's a different term or...
Well, there are a lot of ordinances that say a triplex is, is single-family. A duplex and a triplex is single-family. Above that, you're liable for...
Sure, okay.
Right.
Why not cut it off, quadplex?
Good.
Good, I mean, that could be something that y'all discussed, that it's not three, it could be four.
You could definitely do that.
Yeah, there, there could be structures that probably could have up to four.
Right. My recollection is, when we had a presentation by the materials palette concept, can't remember the gentleman's name, but he presented to us, showed photographs of single-family house quad, looked just like a single-family development, but had four family in it. And that was more of the affordable, it was an affordable unit mixed into the tree scape without sending anybody.
Yeah, I remember that, but do you remember the park that was?
Is that in your community?
Yeah. Here, was a planning firm, they were showing how the old-style buildings, they included the same materials and the same details, where more affluent simply used less of those details, but the tree scape ended up looking very similar because it was pulling from the same palette of materials, so that there was a thought.
Develop something like a two-box.
Yeah, Chatham Park, they can tell you who they...
The two-box.
I can, yeah, I can.
And Chatham, though, I would, I would, the top, the top, the back, the back, the come.
I'm surprised they're not up here already.
I'm sitting right here beside you.
Okay. Can you answer the question, as to what the firm was?
No.
Okay, that's right.
I can't.
So a couple of other things, there's a new way of measuring caliper or the tree size. It's measured six inches above the ground level for field stock, or six inches above soil line for container grown stock. That's a, that's different than the prior elements where we were measuring it breast height, and that's for new trees planted, so you all may want to have a discussion about that.
You know, I saw that change.
Yeah.
And I thought, well, caliper kind of speaks to, and I honestly don't know this, but I never thought about what caliper was versus DBH, you know, a diameter at breast height at one of those, you go hug a tree.
Right, right.
But caliper, when you're buying nursery stock, I've never known where that...
Well, apparently that occurs, as I was informed, Chuck told me, that's a pretty standard, common term or, or a measurement in the nursery field. I'd never seen it before, so it was just something that I wanted to chat about, and, you know, I, I don't know what the, the variance between breast height and six inches is. If we're planting a two-and-a-half inch tree at six inches, what does it look like at breast height of that tree? Is it, does it go down to two inches, as it say, two-and-a-half inches? Probably it varies for species and how the tree has been maintained in the nursery. So if that is a standard way of measuring trees, something to consider.
Because I think that is all about our lens of caliper.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's...
Yeah, was that in, was that on number eight specimen tree?
It is at the bottom of page ten on the red line and page... On the red line, it's page ten, page six on the non-red line. Outside of caliper, we did have a discussion of native tree, and so they're proposing a definition, or there's a footnote as well for that.
Well, that was interesting, because originally we said it had to be native tree, but this is asked it to be how native, it doesn't need to be produced and made in some type of series.
Yeah, I think, I think Chatham Park, you all can have a conversation about that.
Yeah, we have.
So, you know, comments that were, were had, this is addressing the comment, that's how, they heard the comment, they, they debated it, they, they thought that this might be a way to solve that issue, but they, they can go through that, that, the reasoning behind that one.
That, on page ten of the red line.
And...
I'll have to dig it up.
It's this. Prior to today, last week, staff had sent some information over, some comments over on the, the reporting of the trees prior to development, the establishing of TCA, that section, and generally they were, they were okay. We had some, some comments based off of this term predominant natural plant community, what was that, it's not defined. Apparently there is industry standard for that, and Chuck kind of walked me through that. And then there was just some other minor, minor edits that we had in that. So we talked about that a little bit today as well.
On the caliper issue, this is from a constituent of, the element doesn't have language in section six under new trees, it can mean a single family sapling gets 750 square feet TCA credit, and a undersort tree even more, now two thousand square feet. And originally comes from Durham, Durham doesn't give it that much credit.
Is everybody here with the credit involved in undersort tree?
Durham doesn't incorporate Durham's, here plus TCA, a lot of saplings based on caliper, constituents or heights everywhere. Whereas if a constituent can't have saplings, two point five, Chatham Park would count as 200 square feet of TCA, now 750 square feet.
I share that concern.
And if, if, the same 1,000 square foot area can meet the standards for a culture of new trees with no additional saplings, it's like less than one acre such as, such clusters of existing or replanted trees with a top hundred square feet, there could just be one sapling based on the numbers.
Is the term sapling in here, or is that just editorial? Okay. Because I want, you may want to engage with Chatham Park, what does a two-and-a-half inch tree look like?
Yeah. If y'all could talk into the mics, because it's really hard to hear y'all, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. I was going to tap that back there. Well, oh, when I got here.
All down the pit.
All right, I'll, I'll, Chuck and I can tag him, if you can ask Chuck or Ken questions.
I do want to add to you there, one of the things that I talked about last time was the importance of, you know, in our, in his for ladies plan, he talked about a 2,000-foot buffer, and that's a done deal, we've got, not an option now, but in my opinion, we could still provide extra tree cover, tree canopy coverage for those areas, and I know that those are going to be larger lots, but there's no language that I can see that's, that's going to prevent people on those larger lots from just cutting down on trees.
Right.
I personally feel like it's very important that, or whatever, in that 2,000-foot buffer needs, needs great protection.
Yeah, um...
And I don't see anything in the revision to talk about, to address that.
We talked about that today, and Chatham Park has a, has a response to that, and they, they can talk to you all today. I, I would address the, the thought of individual properties being mandated to have trees on them. We're talking about thousands of lots, there is some caveat of some threshold of 5,000 or 7,000 square feet and those being able to be, with no trees on them. Just the, the administration of that policy of having to have the government go out there and figure out, there's three trees on that, that piece of property, and those three, three trees have to stay forever.
I don't understand that on most of the Chatham Park area, but to me, I believe that any of the houses within that 2,000-foot buffer, they need, maybe this is an HOA issue, but I think they need to be seen as stewards of the river, that they have a, a different responsibility than people who are living further away.
And I make the comment, we, we talked about it today, they have a response for you.
Okay, and the other thing I'd like to see in that area is no clear cutting, no, no flattening of the land that, that it deals out, and that, I mean, center land each time, 2,000-foot buffer, I, I'd like to see that land treated differently, and, and not, not flatten it and keep the natural hills, the natural slopes, and, and not clear cut the trees when they build these calving developments, because otherwise, I, I hear Chatham Park saying that they're going, they're going to be larger lots, which is great, but that doesn't necessarily mean more trees, unless there's language that states that.
Yeah, and if it's an HOA covenant thing, that necessarily wouldn't be in the elements, so y'all would have to impress on them to make that happen, for some other needs. But if it's in, in here, I have to enforce it. So could be, could be an HOA, POA response, but that's not something that I wouldn't think to see in any of those documents. But great questions and comments, and we did talk about a lot of these things, particularly that 2,000-foot area around, along the hall, and I believe Ken and Chuck have a response to that, so...
Do you want to add some more clarification about the TCPA area? Because the new definition doesn't limit how large an area of TCPA could be, right? So it seems that if the different land uses, as long as the TCPA area contains one of those land uses, then that's, there could be very few preserved trees outside of spring buffers, and few replanted trees that may technically develop. So...
I think that's a comment that's going to, this is a conversation for Chatham Park, but in my belief, I believe that once a tree is counted for tree protection for some project, it can't count twice. And I think that's where you're going with that comment from constituent there. Maybe they have a different belief, maybe a tree can count twice, but I would hope that that's not the case. It's hard to, it's hard to hear from the audience. Can we not have that?
TCPA has to be a certain percentage, well, needs to include a certain percent of TCA.
Right.
Therefore, it has a fixed boundary, that boundary is platted and recorded at the courthouse for everybody to know.
For that particular project.
This is protected, this is tree coverage area.
For that project, for that subdivision.
Well, that, well, that boundary.
Right.
That includes land development and tree coverage.
So I would think that they couldn't go, that you couldn't plat that same area, that same tree for a different development, or different composition as well.
The TCPA, right.
How large a period TCPA should be.
It is only limited by the size of development, and the development that's got, that's the government's project, such as more sewer availability, road construction, all the costs that go into a development.
Okay, I'll turn it over to Chuck so he can address this topic. Okay, what's first? Caliper. I would venture to say that every planting plan that you've gotten with a development plan in, that's been submitted to the town, has been referring to caliper when trees are being planted, not DBH. DBH is a term that's used with existing trees, and caliper is used with, for trees that are being proposed to be planted, and, and how they are measured are just done differently. Now, the, the term, the definition that we use here comes from American Nursery Standards, that's a, a bible of standards in the landscape industry, and pretty easy to get a copy of that if you'd like it. And it, it covered, you'll see things on landscape plans also for shrubs, it's a one-gallon, three-gallon, five-gallon, ten-gallon sizes of shrubs, and they give you what that mean, what those, what does one gallon mean? I mean, that's milk to me, but when you look at the American Nursery Standards, it gets into definitions of, you know, what size that shrub will be in that pot, for example, and then what the different caliper dimensions typically mean on heights of trees and different things like that. So it, this is not a term that we just came up with that's used in the industry as a, as a standard.
I think you create a visual image for us, what does a caliper look like on a tree? Like one and a half calories would look like.
One, it's, it's in inches, and so it's the, it's the, the width of that, the diameter.
That's why you're not measuring round.
No, it's the diameter.
The diameter of the tree.
Diameter through.
We need to put the definition of caliper on.
I'm curious to know, when we've been doing site plan reviews or construction, destructive reviews, we've got those standards right now. Jeff, how do we presently go determine if a caliper tree was planted per a landscape plan?
We do our little best we can. We get to, if we have to, we would.
Right. So you're gonna look at it and go, yeah, that looks like a two and a half inch tree that missed.
Yeah.
You should develop that ability.
And after a while, I mean, people are putting, as we've talked about before, there are design professionals putting seals on these drawings that certify before you get, before something's out there that it's going to be that size. And then, as I told Jeff today, when we put these things out to bid to a landscape contractor, that's a licensed design professional as well, they give us a bid based on that size. If they're if they are giving us a price on a two and a half inch tree and we're getting a one inch tree, we're getting, I mean, we verify those kind of things because that's going to hurt us. We're paying for something we're not getting. So those are things we typically keep up with now and then as you go through time, maybe someday you'll trust us.
I just do the people that come after you.
Say that.
I said if not, it's a matter of trust that you guys, who comes after you.
Well, they're having to follow the same standards that, you know, your most, I can't confirm this exactly, but I think your UVO is going to be using these same kind of terms in the landscape requirements and all municipal development ordinance do the same thing and they're talking about caliper and they're talking about minimum planting dimensions for anything that's proposed on a planting plan. So this isn't new.
I want to comment on your comment about that you'll trust it.
Oh, I understand. I understand what you're saying. I know you trust me completely. Now, the single family, do you want to talk about the, there a further discussion on the single family? And so the thing, you were you were getting into a lot of what we were talking about there with the new, with new things that are happening, whether it's Airbnb, that's one good example of where people are now renting out bedrooms and creating separate entrances into a bedroom of their house. That's not to say you're going to call that two units, but we don't know how this is going to go in the future. So I think they was trying to protect against some of that is one example. Example number two is we have been looking at projects around the country of, I guess, new residential styles and one thing that we saw that we liked was a three-story, two condominium building, looked like a single family house. And the first, so the first floor, you shared half of the first, the condominium owner, there were two, you know, there were two owners, they have half of the first floor for their two cars and the garage and then the second floor. The second owner, half of the first floor for his two car garage and the third floor. So that was getting into multiple units on one lot, but it didn't look any different from, you could put that on a single family neighborhood. We talked about, okay, if we didn't do something like this and then you're providing those kind of buildings and they had their own, you had to turn in a site plan for that lot within the within the single family neighborhood. Did you want to do that? It just seemed like a lot of trouble for something that you're going to get into with its own stormwater protections, its own tree protections, it's all these things that are taken taken care of with the neighborhood as a whole, with the development as a whole. And you didn't need to do that on a lot by lot basis. We see these things coming as it goes in this direction of more affordability. And the third example is the ADU. We decided not to talk about that in here because I think the Affordable Housing Committee is going to be dealing with that issue, but is that going to be considered a second dwelling unit if you if you put something on top of the garage within that one single family lot? And so these things that are coming now are just primarily because of affordability and trying to deal with issues of affordability, start to get you into these sort of crazy definitions on the surface, but we're trying to take care of something that we see as, we think a good thing.
Well, I think there's another example and that's the cottages that you've done, which are on the videos, right? It looks like a pocket neighborhood, behaves like a pocket neighborhood, but a series of single family homes on a single lot.
And pocket neighborhood is a term that you've got and that y'all have been using and I'm not quite sure what it is, but I think all these things we're talking about to do that.
A pocket neighborhood has that shared parking area, shared common space, sort of your garden or little park, whatever, but the people park in the same park a lot, but then they walk to their house and the houses are close together.
But and you're educating me here, but does it get into the type of dwelling units that are, I mean, can you have townhomes? Can you have cottage or condominium, individual condominiums? Are they all single family detached? Are they duplexes?
All single family.
All?
All single family.
And so a cottage that had a condominium, what was done in condominium, like you talked about with one family living in it, is not a single family? You have you have a single building, a single unit that's a condominium because of not having a lot, it's got one single family in it, does that fit in a cottage, I mean, in a pocket neighborhood?
That wouldn't be our, now our pocket neighborhood talks about lots.
Kind of for the purpose of it to do, you know, walk out.
Yeah, I'm not.
Because it didn't contemplate the idea of single family homes as individual condominiums within a larger lot.
Yeah.
But it behaves exactly the same.
Right.
But it has.
From the street, it looks the same.
Those lots don't have that street frontage, right? So they can have a shared parking facility on that.
A shared, a shared road going in and then a shared parking and then you can walk to your individual home because they're built around, usually.
Right. And usually the single family home, typically in a municipality, having street frontage for that lot is a poor concept within the subdivision plan.
What you're talking about would be great for people at the age, so you could have a shared area with people in individual apartments going off of their houses and then they have a shared living area perhaps for socializing and then they all have a living area.
So, but I, well, I hope, I mean, I, actually, the more we talk about it, the more I understand it. So I think maybe you're understanding it well, but I swallied it in this direction. But at the same time, we want to put a cap of three because it started to seem like you're really getting far afield if it went with a higher number than that, but that's that's up to you.
Well, see, that's a prior point. When does something become local?
Well, it is a bit different. It's something that's single family that means a house in itself, but then it would be another word or something like they're talking about, the block that's been, it appears to be single family, but it's not.
And again, Paul, I think the basis for analyzing this distinction is certainly decide whether that lot has TCA in it or whether it's part of a TCPA and the TCA is outside the lot. Multi-family, we decided it needs to be on that lot. You've got an apartment building, front of building, parking lot on the left, it's like a, you gotta have a tree covered area on that lot. For single family, it's part of a TCPA. And now we're just saying, okay, for these considerations, a duplex or triplex are single family. And or a series of single family units that are on a bigger lot would complicate the benefit of the TCPA because it wouldn't actually behave like a multi-family.
When you found a house that someone's living above their shop. Yeah, but like the old shopkeeper, she's, they have a store and if we, if it's at Dan's Caf, of course it's not Chatham Park, but there's some wood before the people will go over there.
That would be called mixed use. Without a single family, the deal fair and.
Well, I do think three is a good number because more than that is empty like it needs to have.
Now, Jeff's point was, I understand this point, should it be called something else other than single family? Now that, you know, you can.
Yeah, I was looking at multiplex, but the term is out there. Some of the other, duplex, triplex.
And one housing type versus the other. Is it just expanding the traditional model of single family into maybe a three dwelling unit building?
It would be a single family such as duplex, triplex, multiplex, up to three.
Yes.
And that is, that's the extension of the definition.
Right.
So you sort of, you're telling the reader what the expectation is.
Well, you have a series of two duplexes and you have a whole bunch of those, they not like a tree.
No, they would, they would have TCPA.
So that mode of construction would presumably be an effort in direction of affordability and if that development took care of its responsibilities with TCPA, the trees might not be on site and the affordable housing beneficiaries might not benefit from having trees.
That law might not have trees.
And that's a problem, Durham, they're going back down and planting trees because a tree is, people all deserve to have trees, not enough trees.
When you're saying this single family lot, what size is that lot a week? Have a square foot on there anyway?
The small area plan will, the small area plan will define for each of the sections that were defined in the master plan. When we turn in a small area plan, although we'll be resubmitting that because there have been so many things that have come up during the approval of the additional elements that are required to be part of the small area plan, we'll be updating that before you review it. But within that document, we, you can see now that we've included different minimum lot sizes within the different sections, that would answer your question. So it's a variety of numbers, there's no one set number.
Right.
In order to say the subdivision plan would have to identify things such as how many units are being included because there's twenty-two thousand. You have one out of the room, so you can only put up so many triplexes without taking units from other lots. Where is surplus, tree covered area, all that stuff.
What you had indicated, John, about the single family development, what you said to redefine it and in terms of what you've indicated, would you all consider that?
Did you hear from Chuck?
Well, I heard you, I haven't heard anything that was necessarily proposed to be certain wording, but we're happy to, I mean, you've heard.
You heard.
Yeah, you've heard what we're trying to do and I think everyone agrees, it's just a matter of what.
You want to give an example?
Yeah, such as triplex.
Okay, so I've heard you as such as language, okay.
Yeah, I think that will clarify a lot better.
In a single structure.
Yeah.
To make that even clearer.
And you're with, and those things here, you just, you would say such as would.
Yeah, you would add that there was so.
Yeah.
Right. That's what I thought. Yeah, I got that.
Yeah.
And that already says it's a single structure. Right. All big.
Yes. Yes, that's a better word.
Page nine of the red line, section six, new trees. Item one, which would be one and three, three, seven hundred fifty square feet of TCA and one hundred stories tree, three and four every two thousand square feet of TCA. Why did that increase?
Because we, you asked us last time to increase the minimum number of trees that would, within the TCA, that would be hardwood canopy trees from fifty to seventy-five percent. And so when we did that, that starts to take away some of the room you've got for things and we cut back on the other, it wouldn't fit.
Would you mean wouldn't fit?
When we're going to, I mean, you can certainly, if you want to plant trees this far apart, but they aren't going to be healthy that way. When we're putting more of the trees that are required in the TCA to be hardwood trees and canopy trees, those are trees that have typically are going to have a spread of greater than forty feet of canopy. Before, it was only a fifty percent requirement on that. And so now we've got more big trees within the TCA area than there were before. And so we cut back the understory trees. We put in the, you know, no other, as we understand that Durham doesn't do this, but other tree ordinances don't deal with the issue of understory trees. We did that because we thought it was a healthier, by including any at all, we thought it was a healthier stand of trees than just all canopy.
I appreciate that.
So that's why we did that and that and that's the reason we cut it.
There's an aesthetic reason there too.
Sure, yeah. We red buds and dogwoods are a big, big part of this.
Big question about the change from DBH to caliper because as I'm thinking about the shape of a stem of a trunk of a tree, I think I heard caliper is measured six inches off the soil in the pot.
That's the standard, that's right.
So we've just shrunk the size of specimens that will be planted with new trees.
What do you mean by specimen? A specimen?
We've just shrunk the size of the individual.
Well, we didn't, I wouldn't say, I mean, I guess you could look at it that way. We didn't, we were looking at it like we shrunk the, I mean, the, first of all, we had a two inch tree that we increased the size to a two and a half inch tree.
Thinking at six foot.
Well, no, because new trees again are measured with caliper, not DBH. You don't do that.
So we just need to change the number because.
Well, this is, I'll say this.
Two foot at rest height or two inches, two and a half inches at rest height is different from two and a half inches of caliper, six inches off the dirt.
Well, you can, we can all go tour a nursery, you're not, you're not talking about a significant difference.
Significant?
No, well, no, you couldn't, you couldn't buy a tree that way in the nursery because they sell a new tree by caliper, not by DBH. So you'd have to go, I'm not sure how you'd do it, I guess you'd have to go look and it's going to vary from species to species too, probably, but this has never come up in any conversation, so I'm.
Well, forgive us, I think we're all trying something new here.
Well, we are, but we're also not trying to.
And what this board is trying to do to understand this policy writing process.
Well, I'll say, I'll say this, we, well, I understand caliper and DBH and to, given what is in the normal language of tree ordinances, going from two to two and a half is already going to a higher standard than a lot of places, might say it everywhere. This is our proposal and you can decide if that's good enough or not.
Well, two and a half at diameter rest height was, that was what we understood and discussed previously and changing it to caliper. And changing it to Caliper, which is measuring six inches off the top of the soil, is different. It's smaller.
I don't believe, I don't recall talking about two and a half inches DBH. I recall two and a half inches Caliper.
I'm looking at the red lines that says-
That's our documentation.
That's what we were talking about.
That's what I'm saying.
Before we're through with Caliper and DBH, I'd love to hear the discussion that you had, had reached a little while ago about two thousand-foot buffer along the Hall. Being an area, instead of being a buffer, being an area in which there were required trees and no massive amount of earth.
Okay, there are a couple of things there. First of all, you can't, your engineering standards that you require streets to be built to would not meet that requirement. Does that make sense? There are maximum street grades, there are minimum street grades as well, like water to drain, and also for safety reasons, for sight distance reasons. If you said you had to, had to limit yourself to the existing topo on the land with, starting with that, you wouldn't be able to build those streets.
Well, of course you can, you need to build a street. You have to change-
Well, the lots follow the streets.
But there's plenty of housing developments that have hills. They're not all, not all hills are going to be flat.
Oh, they're gonna, they're gonna be plenty. Good grief, this whole place is going to be hills. That's Chatham County.
Okay. So all I'm saying is, within the two thousand-foot buffer, you just can't go in and just flatten everything and build, build a house.
We, well, there are a few reasons that we couldn't do that anyway, but rocking one of them. There's enough, there's enough topography change that you just, of course, I guess then we're getting, what is the definition of flattened mean?
Yeah.
We're not talking about perfectly flat, but you will be grading in those areas to build, to start building the streets. I don't, are you saying that-
I think you're trying to distinguish between mask grading the lots where this document says if your lots are ten thousand square feet or less, you can do that. So in the, that would mean that lots that are greater than ten thousand square feet, you can't do that. And the lots all in this area are minimum one dwelling unit per acre. So each lot will be at least major in size, therefore this lot will be clear type.
When I hear ten thousand feet, I don't know how much that's worth.
So these lots-
Well, you're right. Those, those density tiers closer to the river are going to have those larger lots that would be, whether they're an acre or not, I can't say that, but they're going to be larger than ten thousand square feet.
But I'd like to see, I know you said you come to larger lots and you can expect more trees, and I think that's great. I think that I can imagine that you guys would want to do that, but there's nowhere in this document that I can find that prevents someone from coming in and just clearing their lots quickly. And I do feel like when you-
You mean they're in construction or after they're living there?
Either one. I know you have to clear the trees to build a house, and I'm not saying that lots have to be completely wooded. I just think the standard should be higher. It should be a higher percentage in, in the area close to the Hall River.
There should be a higher standard in that thousand-foot buffer.
Well, the highest standard we have, we talked about, is that we've got, okay, we've only got two areas that are adjacent to the Hall River. And one, we put a three-hundred-foot buffer on, one, we put a five-hundred that we have since committed to go to a thousand. So half of that two thousand is now undisturbed in that one area. Okay, so automatically the percentage is much greater. It's at least fifty percent. And then the, the others thirty-three percent and more. So that's, you know, those two areas have been protected to a higher level than anywhere else. Beyond the fact that they're going to have larger lots in those tiers as well. It won't be mask rated, as you say, because they're over ten thousand square feet.
When you all are developing this lot, so you're planning to reutilize existing trees?
On the, on the lots that are greater than ten thousand, that's, when you look at the way, I mean, the way these are going to really occur is going to be, they're going to be deeper lots than, I mean, than wider. There will be some wider, but the depth means that the rear of those lots are going to have more trees that are kept in the rear just because you didn't need to clear that.
But there's nothing, there's no language, there's nothing official that says that they commit you to doing that?
I don't quite know. I mean, we've had discussions in the air for a few different times where we're trying to stay away from language within the lots themselves. Joe's already expressed a little bit of concern.
I, I kind of understand that. I know that's difficult to enforce, even though I don't really necessarily like it. I do, I would like to see trees protected. I'd like to see trees on residential lots. I wish that had been required in my neighborhood because I didn't have any of those, those short stubby trees. I just feel like this, this particular area close to the Hall, it needs to be helped to a higher standard.
And I think we have across the buffers we put on the Hall.
Joe, I'd very much like to see-
Yeah, we-
I'd very much like to see a proposal of language from Chatham Park investors as regards the suggestion that the property owners association, the HOA, could do something different, something better as regards trees in that area.
Maybe, maybe it is an HOA thing, but something that, that really instills in people who live along the river, that maybe that is part of the pride of that community is that you're stewards of the river and, and and you think of that when you're naming those developments and there's language and courage from the HOA to, to, in responsibility of, of living that close to the Hall. It'd be great if they didn't, you know, affect the public or something. I feel like they should be helped to a higher standard and so can they, they can do it now.
Well, I can't legislate, right, but-
You can write language. You can create HOA suggestions.
But I, but I will say between, again, between the buffers, the density restrictions, and the stormwater language that we put in there, that part of the uplift of being able to meet the stormwater scoring system has to do with the trees that you leave undisturbed. That, that addresses that, that question.
I hope so. You know, it's hard to know for sure, but we have so many different elements to make sure that these things really are protected and there's some, you know, it's hard to, hard to hack so well.
Well, I think we said minutes ago that it's very difficult to, to deal with how to enforce HOA regulations. Because I think universally, everybody likes the concept and the idea, but when it comes down to actually suing somebody who goes in and cuts all their trees down, if you're their next door neighbor, what are your damages? And that, that's always been a driver, if I remember correctly, to successful restrictive covenants is that they've got to have enough teeth in them that they can be effectively utilized. But that oftentimes the question of damages is, is just not there. Is that a fair way to put it, Mr. Governor?
I would agree with that.
Well, I guess then that me and the two hundred-plus other people who live in Chatham Forest are just either uninformed or naive because we're abiding by HOA restrictions right now. My wife and I submitted requests, requests to take down trees that we deemed to be unsafe. And that could have been rejected by the HOA appearance committee. I, I, this is just silly that we're, we're down selling this notion that we, we can't have HOAs that, that put forward this community's values. And I won't accept it. It's just unacceptable, the idea that you, oh, we just can't do that. Sorry, we just can't do that. That's silly. I'm sorry to, to look at that exercise there, but I just think it's just silly.
So I think preferentially it would be better to write it into the treaty or anything than it would be to rely on most of the government. I mean, I think that-
It's five-pointers. If there's any willingness to go with it.
Well, that's been a point that I've tried to make day one. I need to make it with Chatham Park. I'll make it with UDO. That we don't need to have tree covered requirements on individual lots. We don't need the enforcement issues that Jeff talks about. We don't need neighbors pitted against neighbors, keeping an eye on whether or not you cut down a tree to book a swing set for your kids or not. You know, I hear you on the homeowners association. I would not choose to live in a place that had those types of restrictions. And I would not think it's healthy to do that to a community when you have other options to set aside other pieces of land to fulfill those obligations. Knowing darn well the people on those individual lots are going to keep a lot of trees. And especially in this area, I think, you know, what we've heard is we don't have any, zero tree coverage requirements these hits were on right now. Yet we've got a lot of yards that have a lot of trees in them. It's the community. People say they move here because they like the trees. I think it's going to continue and they're going to continue to enjoy the trees and preserve the trees. On their individual lots.
I just think this is different. We've got, we've got, I'm going to get on my mailbox again, but we've got beautiful, something special here on the Hall River. There's so much, there's so much existing trees. There's big trees that we can't just, oh, I'm going to plant a tree. It'll take a hundred years to get the size of these trees that are, that are along the river, along these forests. It's not the same thing. If you say you don't care about that, I personally, I think that neighborhoods that have less of trees are so much more attractive. I do think people want to have some good sized trees in their yard. They don't want to just have dumb saplings. They want to have real trees in their yard.
I agree. And I don't think that I've ever said, I don't appreciate the trees in my yard. I think if you were looking at my yard, you'd see the evidence of that. What I'm saying is these are big lots. You don't have to clear the lot to build a home. You've got a bunch of trees in there. Odds are you find them beautiful, you find them useful for all the beneficial reasons we all recognize.
It's just concerning because that much of Chatham Park is residential because it doesn't have tree requirement. And we're just trusting, we're just trusting people not to go in and cut down all the trees.
No, residential has the highest percentage of requirements for tree coverage. Just not part of the lot.
That's right.
So you're setting aside large lots of land in order to fulfill the tree coverage requirement, not counting individual trees on individual lots. In fact, if you've got these three hundred, five hundred, now thousand-foot buffers on the Hall, it's pretty good job of, and I said this before, last meeting. It takes that land and it puts it in the public realm as opposed to having it privately owned where private owners coordinate off it.
It is, it's a benefit.
And it should be acknowledged, so. Those are the largest, probably the largest lots in the development. Maybe the ones to the south would be larger, but it will be around for another thirty or forty years.
It's a bit, it's a bit, it's a bit more than a lot to purchase.
Didn't Governors Club successfully create lots without picking trees down? I'm thinking that they did. And even the settings of houses on some of those lots, there's some very steep lots.
How large are they?
Pardon?
How large are the lots?
They're severed?
Yeah.
He couldn't last this long. Yeah, I mean, I think-
Well, I don't know.
I wonder if that does not extend to thousands of other, what does that show than that?
I think that might be a presence from the small area plans that's been superseded.
Well, now I don't quite know what you're looking at. If you're looking at one of our growing. That shows what?
This Chatham lot would be a three hundred feet.
Okay, so it's the area where there's the three hundred-foot buffer and then it's showing the area where there's the thousand-foot buffer.
Five hundred went to a thousand or is it just three?
The five hundred went to a thousand. Now, it could inform me here, where, where else has somebody put a thousand-foot buffer along the Hall?
I don't know, does anybody-
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that either.
Are you, is that a report question?
No, it's not. It's a genuine question. Who else has put that kind of buffer on the Hall River? I mean, I know there are plenty of subdivisions along the Hall River, but they don't, I think they've got the, the required state buffer of a hundred feet or fifty feet or whatever the requirement is.
Well, to a certain extent, there are no planes that have to be taken into account and the-
And we would be taking those too. I'm just saying what, where, they are what's going on here. These are, this is good land that's being given that buffer. Where else does that happen?
So Chatham County has the river corridor zone.
But that, what, who's being putting a thousand?
And the other nation is different there. I mean, I was thinking of areas down in Longshire area where, where homes are set back off the river because of the flood time. But there, there's steeper slopes at the Hall that-
Some of those slopes, we've, we've got these buffer, the three hundred-foot buffer, it's not steep slopes. Some are flatter slopes, actually. So I mean, we're not trying, I mean, that was done during the master plan. I'm not, I'm just asking. I mean, I know there's been a lot of talk about thousand and two thousand and all these things, but who is actually doing it?
Well, I, I can't get that, I can't get that agreement with, with the way you're putting it, which is-
I'm just asking a question. I'm not trying to put it anywhere. If somebody's done it, then-
But there was a, there was a report, there was a, an intention- But there was a, there was a report, there was a, an intention on the part of this board due to that, and that was stated, you know, a long time ago, long before I was on this board, but-
Oh, I don't know. I don't know.
But, but Chad and Parker, do you have any questions?
Well, it is, I mean, we've, we've had the numerous times of conversations of being in the urbanizing area versus the further out in the county, and being on public utilities versus well-inseptic tank. And so, when you, when you put those criteria in there, I think that the buffers that, we don't apologize for the buffers we put on the Hall River at all, at all. And then when you put the density tiers behind that, I mean, I think, and then the stormwater scoring system that encourages saving trees to get those, to get points needed to meet the requirements, I, I think when you put all those things together, again, I'm not going to, I'm not going to apologize for what we proposed, and I feel pretty good about it.
Well, what I was going to say was that what drafting, there was a wonderful children's book that turns out with, "If I ran the zoo, here's what I'd do." And if you wanted to draft something like that, and so was it done? And, I mean, I, I'd like to see it.
I think I have a question too about page 15 of the Red Act of, no, not red, the red version, page 15, section 11, letter O. Activities permitted by the open space element and repairing buffers that qualify TCA under this element and any other activities approved out of town. So does that include, you know, the plazas where trees are in containers, that kind of thing?
No, I think when it's talked about, there are certain, you correct me, there are certain uses that you allow your, your repairing buffer disturbance on this. And allow mitigation or don't allow. And so, it's referring to what you have in your ordinances already, like a greenway would be allowed.
Yeah. But bear in mind, it also says that qualifying has TCA, so it still needs to meet the standards of TCA.
Again, what happens when trees in protected areas die? And part of the ordinance states that they can remove the small, you know, small trees under certain files. So as the, as trees die, then how are these tree clusters maintained?
Well, I can't control the depth of trees or naturals that-
Right. So if they're required trees, will these trees not be replaced if they die, if they get old enough?
There's, there's no requirement to replace them. I'm not going to say that the trees wouldn't be replaced. But that's, that's no, that's standard ordinance language. I mean, you can't control-
Well, there is language that says the HOA or the private property that is responsible for the TCA. So if there are planted trees that die, yeah, they're expected to be planted back. Now, I think there's a time limit on that.
This is definitely talking about clusters of trees, where you have a tree that, you know, it says that trees that die or trees that are, that sprout up can be removed. So then eventually you're not going to have cluster trees. Can we talk about things that can be taken out? Like dead trees can be taken out, take out invasive trees, you can take out small trees. But if, you know, eventually you just take out dead trees, you're not, if you're taking out, you don't, you don't trees that are trying to grow, then eventually, you know, the dead trees are not going to be taken into the cluster.
Well, I would disagree with that. I mean, you're bringing up the two, because certainly trees will die. And by taking out the one, the trees less than two inches, you've given a healthier growing situation for the other trees that are over two inches.
Right.
They're going to continue to grow.
Sure.
Birds are going to continue to drop seeds. Wind's going to continue to blow seeds, and their trees are going to be popping up.
Right, but it says that you can take out the young trees, so I'm just saying like-
Well, the one, yeah, it's, again, but that's more for health of the, of that stand of trees.
But if you always take out the young trees that come up, then the older trees die, then there's nothing to replace them for.
If, yeah, I guess, I guess there is a-
Eventually.
Some sort of scenario that every two inch tree's grown to a point of every two inch tree is going to die. I've just never seen that.
Just bring it up, because-
No, I, I, I mean, I, I mean, I can, yeah, I can, I mean, I, I get your, I get your point. I've just never, I mean, I've seen a lot of things.
That's what I'm saying, is that people would not necessarily be on top of it and clear out all the, the young trees that pop, that pop up. So there's kind of these dogs that manage to get tall when they're taken care of.
Well, I wouldn't say manage to get tall. I mean, I think the, the more likely situation is, the intent is not to go in there into these areas and take out the trees, particularly in those, I mean, some of this language is really dealing with maintenance of areas, say, that are along roadways and just for, for visibility and safety standpoint. And you, at the same time, when you've got a 40 inch tree, you don't want those one inch trees competing with it.
If you can take out all these, then they won't have no trees replacing the older trees.
So what parts of those would you say you shouldn't be removing?
Is under, uh, section 11, you can allow the TCA?
Right, I'm looking at that, but I mean, removing the diseased trees, you would say, yeah, you should do that.
Yep.
And removing invasive trees, I mean, we've already committed to that in the landscape element.
I'm sure it's D and D that I was talking about. Because once you're going to remove dead trees, but then if you're, if the trees die and you're removing the tree less than two inches, then there won't be any trees that are, I'm just saying the TCA areas would become pretty thin.
Yeah, do you, do you guys who have, who have POA associations, are they commonly going out into your areas where you have trees and cutting down the one inch trees? Generally, they're all the money to do those things. I mean, they're strapped for finding money to do anything. I don't think they're arbitrarily, "Okay, it's time to go cut down all the one inch trees. Let's go find a bid for that." I don't-
I think that's more of an effort to keep it healthy and protect the trees.
Other concerns in person, Chad?
Um, this is, uh, it's also just punctuation issues, I can't tell you about.
You saw what I was saying?
I did.
I can't believe it.
Okay, I apologize, not very tall. I'm looking at the, um, the clean version. Page three, section 4.3, where it says lots, and it has the third footnote, right here there? Yep. Um, page six, footnote five, native tree is small i in parentheses, and then invasive tree has three small i's in parentheses.
We thought there were three. Where'd the suit go? It disappeared?
Okay. Um, page eight, section seven, item three. It talks about the greenway relative to buffer, and that the greenway can split the buffer, and the greenway will not count as TCA, but either side of the TCA buffer will count as tree coverage. And it says, notwithstanding foregoing dimensional standards, a repairing buffer that qualifies as TCA, including meeting the required dimensional standards, is separated, two or more portions by a street utility used in greenway or multi-use path. All separate portions of that repairing buffer is deemed to satisfy foregoing dimensional standards. I would like to add, interject this into that sentence, and say, where it talks about the repairing buffer is deemed to satisfy, I would like for it to say that the repairing buffer, if, when added together, meet the minimum foregoing dimensional standards, is deemed to satisfy.
Give me a second.
Yeah. I understand the point.
Yeah, okay. Okay. You don't have to say it exactly the way I, you know, you don't-
Well, I would like for, there were a lot of words there.
Would you repeat, would you repeat what you said?
Um, all separate portions by repairing buffer, if, when added together, meet the minimum foregoing dimensional standards, is deemed to satisfy the foregoing dimensional standards.
Got it.
Page nine, section nine, item one, needs a shall be in there. A tree coverage inventory filter report with respect to individual development site for TCA at Appicore shall be prepared.
Got it.
Um, page 10, section 10, I want to rearrange items one, two, and three. I would like item number three to become number one. I would like item number one to become number two. And I'd like item number two to become number three. And part of the reason is, one, us to say, these reports are submitted with a development plan. The other thing will follow. And I'd like to change-
But what, but where are you getting, I'm sorry.
Um, page two, section 10.
Okay.
Presently, item number one, the second line towards the end, second line up the end, says that a, well, a report from certified arborists as to the health of a specimen tree, recommendations to mitigate the impact of disturbance, shall be obtained prior to any disturbance. I would like it to say, shall be included with the specimen tree survey prior to any disturbance of the protection zone. So that is part of the tree protection survey, or the specimen tree survey that's submitted with plans, so that Jeff can say, oh, that specimen tree is getting its corner clipped a little, and I'd like the arborist to tell me whether or not it's going to survive, and whether you can count it as TCA. Um, I think my last item is-
Is this what you have?
I think so. Okay. Section 11, item two, last line, uh, there's an air in, got five.
I found a couple years on proud of myself.
Can we go back to page 10?
Yeah.
And what is now number two that was number one?
Yes.
On the next to the last line?
Yeah.
So are we deleting the word obtained and replacing it with included with the specimen tree survey? Is that what you said?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Okay.
Got it.
Yes, sir. I, I thought that's-
Do you have any questions?
Yeah. Another couple more questions, I'm not sure I have a formulae. What does that mean?
I mean, the two hundred yards, you're like, Chuck.
Okay, that's what, that's what that means. So we're, we're doing this another time, and we're going to be last on the agenda that time too.
We can make that arrangement so that, that doesn't happen again. Because I think it, it's everybody's benefit to appear, maybe-
All right, I get you.
Maybe at six o'clock, or something. What about that? That would help, uh, get, get a little bit earlier, and that would give you staff time to formulate your final thoughts.
Jones will make his first work for you.
Oh, does that matter to you? Sure, as long as, pretty, y'all won't give me another draft until you've had all the comments.
Right. Yeah. I know, we're lost changing, but there are only a couple of small.
Whatever you- I didn't quite catch what the mayor said, I'm sorry, but I'm not really there.
I, I said just, starting earlier in the meeting, we're up to the end of August, which is not quite actually, but-
It was close enough to be midnight.
It, it, yes.
Well, could, could, could ask Mr. Bonnies if he would formulate his questions and get them to Mr. Jones, so that we might have an opportunity to-
I'll ask that.
That would be very much appreciated.
I would appreciate that too, John. I'm confused that you don't have your questions formulated prior to providing tonight.
Don't be confused, I've been very busy then.
Yeah, we're all, we're all very, very busy. I think this is very, very important.
Okay, so go to ten at six o'clock, or what station? Okay, so go to ten at six o'clock, or what station? We said we would take up number five of Old Business.
Yes.
Number five is the best agenda in Old Business.
So regarding the Santa Forte Four Spain project, it's a very simple question for Mr. Messick. We had earlier discussed the idea of inclusion of language for greenways in your easement proceedings, your efforts to establish your sharing easements. And I thought, I heard you said that you could already work that in, or you could work that in.
Some easements, yes. Now, there are probably eight individual private property owners that are affected by the four Spain. There are three or four in Chatham and there are three or four in Lee. Can't imagine you're going to have a greenway in Lee County, so I don't think that's part of it. I'm not sure that greenway plan would include easements that are in Chatham County either, all of them, at least some of them. If there's, if there's any indication that a greenway is appropriate for sewer easement for the Chatham County property, sure, we'd do that. And we, we've already discussed doing that with the ones that are underway now. But not all sewer easements are appropriate for greenway. But greenways are appropriate for sewer easements.
Sometimes, it's not very helpful.
Well, reflecting back, I guess it was the retreat we collected on the documents from 2017 and 2018 retreats, war retreats. We saw the desire of this board for connectivity, specifically greenway, specifically in all opportunities, and I think that was the language. And we recently passed the Parks Master Plan, which also discusses greenways. So I think it'd be terrific if we could have easements that allow access to our southern park. Forgive me if I'm blanking on the name. Rock.
Rock Ridge.
Rock Ridge, thank you. At a minimum, would we be able to.
That's a long way down fifty-five to one. I don't know how you're going to do that. The four Spain is going to run in the right ways or highway. Always we can, so I, I don't know how to, how you have a greenway to, to the Rock Ridge Park. I mean, maybe Elizabeth knows better, but I, I just don't know how that would work. You're not going to be walking down the right way. So I mean, unless you're going to go across country.
I, I don't know. I think it depends on where it is in the right way.
I, I can't imagine you have a greenway in any part of fifty-five to one right away. The back lane is different. You're going to have people walking on the road, you're not going to have it next to the highway. But I mean, if that's the plan for the town, then sure. I mean, the state may, may not even give you an encroachment agreement for a pedestrian greenway in a public major thoroughfare highway. I mean, I guess somebody has to ask, but I just, maybe Jeff knows better, but I can't imagine that would happen.
They don't typically like that long, they don't, highway like that, but.
So the holding is actually only five to five miles.
Three and a half, we can inquire.
It's probably two miles.
So the right of way are pretty large. I mean, it's, isn't it more interesting large?
We, we don't have all of that right of way yet for our.
My point is going to be within feet of the basement, or within.
I would imagine.
So that's against the board.
I mean, we, we can look into it if there's an appropriate place, but I think there's going to be a little bit of a challenge on those.
My understanding was on the west side of the highway was where the U-Lanes were going to go, especially. So I was assuming that then it would go on the east side.
It's one of what, what, what it is. So we would have people calling that major street.
I think the white line is on the east side now.
Well, Mr. Messick, maybe you could have a conversation with Mr. Moore because I think if he, if anyone has to up this through more than, certainly more than myself.
All right.
That'd be great. All right.
But this, I believe we need to clarify anything, because each was here, but item five is a budget amendment to have money available to hire people to negotiate these easements.
Yes. And we would need to know what language for negotiating for.
Well, no, sir, I don't think that's really the issue. The issue is how much you're going to have to pay them to get the easement. And I mean, the cost of a greenway versus sewer line is fairly nominal, I would think. But you still, we still have to acquire easements from all these property owners, and we're going to have to pay the money. So somebody needs to contact the property owners and negotiate price. The form of the easement may make some difference, but not in a significant. And that's what this is for.
The easements are a tiny portion of length of this sewer line.
Sure.
Yeah. So is it tiny?
Fifteen miles of it's a highway.
Right. And how mu, how many linear feet is an easement along by the property?
I, I don't know. I don't know.
There is.
Couple, there, a couple thousand feet.
And it could have a greenway, but it would have a greenway that would not be on it in the right way.
Linear.
Couple thousand foot greenway. No, I mean, that's ahead in Lee County and Chatham. Okay.
You don't need an easement in the right of way, right? You need an easement for private property. So a couple thousand feet of private property is what's being purchased.
Well, let's see if we can add it in, because it's always more expensive to go back and do something like that later. And we'll reserve the option for future.
The, the draft easement that we're talking about now, it says that if there's a greenway easement acquired, it will be subject to whatever greenway plan the town comes up with. So it's probably incumbent on you all to come up with a plan. And then you can decide. But you're right, I mean, it's better to get the easement first. But it would be easier if you had a plan to know where the easement should be, I mean, you know, we know where the sewer line is going to have to go. Whether or not you've wanted a greenway along those sewer lines sort of depends on a plan.
Will the bike path plan dress up?
But I'm not, I don't know if it'll go all the way to Rock Ridge Park.
So the question then is, can it, can we consent to the issue of moving the money where it needs to be for the acquisition of the easement? And also couple it with a statement of policy from the board that with, when those easements are, are acquired, that they be considered for greenway.
Sure. Thank you. Is that moved?
Second. Does the chairman's team, did you get restating on?
I, I suppose.
Mr. Carey.
Thank you so much, Mary. And we just should now approve the special ordinance for the Santa Forte project. I think we just approved the line, but.
Yeah.
And then the last piece would be number three from the committee agenda. Under new business.
So, um, we're going to recommend that because this regards litigation, that we move this to closed session for the May thirteen meeting. For conversation in the board, with staff.
Is there a motion? There's a second. Mr. Carey, please, can you keep restating on it?
Aye.
Close. Motion, very cool. So I think if people, it indicates that there were no permission updates earlier in the meeting, are there still pushing?
We have one. This is the last thing. I was contacted by someone from, for, for, actually TU, I guess. They are, they'll be putting in a wheelchair round that goes to a park that they're seeing as a park in a church, but also they see it as a gift to the town. And they have a contractor who's ready to do it right now, and he's got things scheduled for later. He has a small window to do this project for them, and they need to get, yes, they have to do it.
But maybe you'll reach out and ask some questions about how to get a book.
Okay.
What's valuable to the project, where is the whole thing at?
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to go.
I'm going to go to the, I'm going to go to the. He is having it with the last week, and I'm just going to go back to the.
So this is from wheelchair.
I, I, I know, and he's sworn during, so the cell phone is what Bruce White told him. He wanted to talk through what exactly was. We don't have a plan, we're telling him to catch, and that's part of what's, they talk recently. That's who reached out to me, if there's a thing issue, I don't, I guess I get the thing issue. That's the only issue that's related, because something just described that we've heard of.
So can you let me know if you can see something from the, from the insurance?
I appreciate.
If the reason why, I think a while, is because like you guys for some reason don't have it, then that's.
Right here, off of the circle, right? Yeah.
And that's the partner talking.
That, that's the one that, yeah.
Okay, so you'll, you'll check and you'll check with that.
And I, I, I mean, I, I, I don't think that's.
Okay, yeah, they're, this contractor down, but now they're, all these other projects, so they're like, oh. And I have to say, personally, because this is a park, it's, I think I'm going to have to go with my head.
Yeah. Jay, was there anything on your mind?
Getting a little late, a little while.
Yes. Brian, more. I've been at the Northwood Traffic Center. Up north going south on fifty-five oh one, and it seems to be an inordinate delay giving the cross traffic far more time when there's nobody there. And I know you can have it timed, or you can have it since the presence of vehicles. It just, I mean, it's been so long waiting there that it struck, it caught my mind. So it's not a good.
And you're going to have your kids who take you to school.
It's, it's, is that DOT?
Yes, that, our company is in this actually, a couple of days time. With construction and company making challenges with that whole four of the line.
Yeah. Page garden park, it's getting a little old. On the very north wall, we're on the north wall underneath the benches, there's not a lot of sunshine, and it's starting to grow some moss, not old moss, sorry. Yeah, and the rain has clogged up, so it's a lot of debris. Which drain? There's only one drain in, in the park? Yeah. Yeah, a little, little landscape drain in front of the patch. Slippery this? Yeah. On the road, yeah. Also, so we are dealing with the western intake. Could we get periodic regular updates on, on that, on those? Okay.
Maybe this was just established.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it has some interesting language in it that I'd like to, I'd like to be aware of progress. And the street sign kiosks, they're looking a little shabby again. I know we painted them a couple of years ago, and we did. We freshened each side kiosks. Yeah, a little concrete monuments. Oh, okay, yeah. All right, that's it. Got you.
Yes, Mr. Goodson, while you're reaching out to NC DOT, if you'd be so kind, it may not be the same person, but it is a district engineer. They might just ask about the erosion that's happening on the right way on the, probably fifty-five oh one sixty-four, it's not right in the clothing, the northeast quadrant, northeast corner. There's something just off the plant that's, it's, it's getting bigger. Exactly. Yes. A big, pinky red hole. I also wanted to thank staff for the excellent work section did on the new town hall. And that was, that was a really positive experience. And I'd just like to ask for close attention for just the last, last couple minutes there. I think we had a really good conversation, and it seemed like we, we coalesced around a consensus. One thing that we talked about, and we've talked about numerous times before, but I'd like to make sure that we're all clear on, is the notion of exploring solar on the new town hall. I said for a retreat, the design retreat, not for a retreat, the design workshop for new town hall. I don't want us as a town to invest in solar without understanding its payback, without understanding when taxpayers are going to get the money back, and how much revenue it's going to give us in the future. And so I'd like to ask, I'll make it a vote, does the board support doing analysis to understand the costs of solar?
I have some question about that, I mean, is it, is it about the cost, or is it the state in the right way? I mean, is, is the cost, at what point would it not be? I guess fifteen years, twenty years, not really. I guess that would be that question.
I think that's going to be part of the lead study. You're asking for that additional financial. So it, it may be a conversation we need to have with the HOPS, but my understanding of lead is it does not, does not get into various financing mechanisms, grant sources, utility incentives. That's what I presented to the mayor in this estimate from the North Carolina Energy Technology Center, which is a nonprofit, to do that work, to do that analysis. So this court understands, probably something along the lines of scenario A, scenario B, scenario C. Scenario C might include battery backup power for the whole building instead of a generator.
You're, you're looking for, you just know what you're looking for options for.
Yes, because I think that, I mean, my understanding of solar is that it's a foregone conclusion in my mind. There will be some amount of solar that just makes sense because of the grants that are available. But I would like us to have the numbers before we go in, so that we're, when we're looking at the overall budget for this project, we're going to be able to respond to our constituents saying, yeah, you may think that's extra, but guess what? That's going to make us a run in five years' time for whatever the scenario. Yeah. Yeah, you just don't know.
I heard you, the top, uh, I would say that he would go look into that.
What happened?
He made very well, he said he would look into solar, but it's, it's a different, it's a different quarter.
I, I, I think what John's asking for is a policy stick from this board. It says, yes, we support solar to, uh, to the extent that we can say that right now, but also depending upon what you just said about the cost benefit analysis of, of how much we do, we do, just some on, on, on the buildings, we outfit some on the parking garage, I mean, you know, how, how far we go.
Well, I think that's all part of the architect's design analysis.
And we're going to be looking for direction.
They are, and what I heard us provide direction is look into this, see what's feasible. And I heard you asked them for financial analysis as far as return on investment. All right, all right, I, I, I would like it to be a vote for that that's what we're interested in.
And I have the consensus from the data.
That's fine, that's it.
But they can say that they want to do that.
Okay.
But you can go and make your lecture, you can, just to be clear.
I don't recall when I said. So tired, yeah.
If we wanted to make a policy stick, that we support solar on Newtown Hall.
Maximum cost effective solar, and you should understand this kind of accuracy. Yep.
That your motion?
That's my motion.
Bye, Michael, here.
Thank you.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you, friends, for those.
One, one last thing, um, and that is the Durham, my daughter told me the other day that Durham has adopted a program called Adopt a Dream, Adopt a Stormwater Dream.
Wonderful.
And if you have walked all over the neighborhood.
Yes.
You know, my vehicle had that excellent dream, like, it's a driveway. Do you maintain that dream?
No, I love trees, love it.
Well, which is my thing, sometimes, John, if we come to rain here on property, um, or even across town, that, that by cleaning out a stormwater dream, we do.
That's your network, you're supposed to.
And. And, um, okay, it's too late to. Poor Jeff has, has, um, is there a motion to return?
Yes, there is.
I don't know.
I wouldn't say see you tomorrow, but I'm here.